Good morning. It's eight thirty, and I'm going to call the February twenty-seventh meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. First thing on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next on the agenda will be Citizens Be Heard. Do we have any citizens who are here to speak to any issue that's not on today's agenda? Ms. Larson, we have anybody remotely?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Motion and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And next, we have approval of minutes from February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any corrections? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next, we have the two thousand twenty-three Annual Development Report Presentation, and have some, a former associate of mine with City of Morehead, Kristi Luszewski. We have Derek Lapointe, President and CEO of Downtown Morehead, Inc., and welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. On a beautiful morning.
Spring is with us.
That's right.
Somewhere.
I see it's an e-learning day, too.
It's an e-learning day, so we got a hard stop nine forty-five, got to be on the call to get those attendance records.
You're better than I am. Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for inviting Derek and I to talk today. We're really excited about the two thousand twenty-three development report. We had some really great activities and construction happening in two thousand twenty-three. And one of the things that we'll just hit on as we're going through this quickly for you today is that all of these things were possible because of partnerships. No community can do all of these things on our own, so we're just really proud and happy with the partnerships that we have here in this community, including the county. One thing that I just want to touch on, a new addition that we had in two thousand twenty-three was a Camino online permit guide. This has really been helpful for our residents if you're interested in building a shed or a fence, and you want to just check into it on a Saturday afternoon, you can hop on Camino and kind of take a look at some of those things. We've had really great hits on it, and so it's been quite popular. So many other things coming in two thousand twenty-four, but one of our new additions in two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, and as I mentioned a couple months ago when I came in front of the county commission here, two thousand twenty-three was, in a lot of ways, from the outside, a very challenging, you know, time. It was economically difficult to build. The inflation on materials was still high, interest rates are still high, but we saw great development within our community, and we'll get through some of the highlights here. One of them on the slide here above is just talking about our downtown neighborhood and obviously as a representative of Downtown Morehead, Inc., and the importance that we've stressed on the core of our community because the infrastructure is there. We saw two projects that took advantage of our Renaissance Zone incentive that's been extremely successful over the last few years. Fairmont Flats, which is on First Avenue North, Kevin Bartram project, and it's really coming up and really making its form quickly here over the last few weeks. And then Armory Annex, which I was out last week, but I drove in through Center Avenue yesterday, and I saw the windows going in on the Armory Annex building. And for those that recall driving up and down Center Avenue for the last number of years, seeing those boarded up and just in a difficult kind of spot, that whole area where Swing River Brewing was to where this old kind of Napa Auto Parts store was, seeing that transform has been fantastic. Obviously, the downtown project, the Morehead Center Mall project has been, there's been a lot of updates on that. Obviously, a little teaser here, but we will have Kevin Bartram coming forward with his project on the United Sugar's parking lot on our Monday meeting for the EDA, the Morehead Economic Development Authority. So seeing our first big project take roots in the spring, hopefully here in the next month and a half.
We saw some really great permit numbers for single-family and multifamily in two thousand twenty-three as well. In fact, our single-family was up eighty-two percent over two thousand twenty-two, and our multifamily numbers were up sixty-two percent. As Derek mentioned, there were some challenges in the building environment, including interest rates in two thousand twenty-three, so the fact that we saw these permit numbers was really outstanding, and it was really thanks to our building community. Our single-family home builders, Jordal Custom Homes, JV Hogg, and Diamond Rock were our top three in two thousand twenty-three with a total of seventy-six new single-family homes, which is just incredible. So we, again, partnerships with our contractors and thank our contractors for that. For multifamily, we also saw a number of different specialized housing units, which was really important in our community, whether it was for seniors or low income. We saw a number of different projects that were really helping to make sure that our community was helping in housing everyone in it. And just some tools in our toolbox, we want to make sure that we have those incentives that are available so that people can keep constructing in our community.
If I can, Kristi, and I know obviously the county will, and have probably heard this as well, but we saw it at the State of the Cities meeting at the Chamber did a couple months back as well, where a lot of people are making comments about the two-year new home tax incentive and how Horace was in a difficult spot because of the inconsistencies that they had. And so having that stability within government through Clay County and through the City of Morehead, I think, has given that factor of certainty, which, so much so, whether it's you're building a home or building a business, having government certainty is truly a big factor in how somebody proceeds or not proceeds.
And as a border city, we also have different multifamily incentives that are specific to Morehead that we're really trying to get the word out and we think are really helpful in that construction industry.
Yeah, so moving from residential to kind of commercial, it was a good year for commercial, if you want to skip ahead a couple slides here. So this is just the two thousand twenty-three projects that we had. Again, a number of them that I think a lot of people from the outside probably thought we were losing businesses left and right, but reality, we had a number of great business starts. I think some of the highlights in here, obviously, we have some restaurant kind of ones with Chipotle and some renovations to the East Ten kind of area. One that I think is really special to our community is the expansion of Kidco Children's Museum on Center Avenue. That's been an amenity that I think our community's been looking for for quite some time, having them kind of take a small step in establishing in Morehead and Center Avenue, but now kind of taking over more space has been a truly good fit. And I think it will fit very well with our play space, that's me, and plan for the Library Community Center that Kristi will hit on a little bit later, too. If you want to skip ahead to our industrial development, I mentioned this before to Clay County, I think one of our biggest growth potentials in Clay County is our industrial market. You see it all over the nation right now. It was a trend for a long time with like warehousing and distribution centers. We are, I would say, even far behind that pace, so I see more opportunities that are coming with this. So we had a number of businesses start or expand. The slide on the screen here just talks about our Markara Industrial Park, and we had the expansion of some lots that went eastward with the help of a BDPI State of Minnesota grant through DED, brought two million dollars. We have, I think, three of those lots already sold and ready to go, so it's just getting the word out, and we're already seeing development happening on those sites, and we expect more to come. One thing I think that's crucial maybe mentioning here today, too, so we are working closely with our power, our utility providers. One thing that we're finding is our electrical capacity is still something that needs to be expanded for us to attract larger users. We're obviously working very closely with Morehead Public Service, but obviously our other county kind of providers to see how we can make sure that we're not at a disadvantage when we're having a big regional attraction for some of these large users that are obviously large job creators, but large tax-based providers as well. The next one.
And then throughout our community and our county, you know, one of the most important things is education. We continue to see investment in our educational facilities, K through twelve, and higher education, as well as some of our other institutional projects, numbers that are being taken by Clay County. And I just want to highlight another hangar out at the airport, and we will have another private hangar on the Airport Committee agenda this week. So just really proud of everything that's happening out there as well.
Could I ask a follow-up on that?
Of course.
Is it the private hangars, is that an industry? Is that a personal, like, what is, what is the preference in terms of how that will be used?
So private hangars are actually, the city enters into a land lease, and they are fully constructed by a private individual or organization. So it could be a business, it could be an individual, they pay property taxes on that hangar, but it is a land lease with the city, so they are fully financed through a private party.
Great. Do you have any insight in what the trends seem to be? Are these, are these businesses, are these corporations?
The last one that was constructed last year was actually Titan Industries, so it was a business hangar. The one that we have on the agenda this week is also another business. It is actually aviation business, though. They want to do aerial tours of the FM area, so we're really seeing a mix of both aviation businesses at the airport as well as using it for business.
Okay. And then a follow-up, because I know we've worked this through over years in terms of more planning, land use. As we've had conversations about the Aquifer, has that been a challenge to put private hangars up? I mean, have we figured out ways to mitigate that? How are those discussions going?
Generally speaking, we have provisions in our leases, both for our T-hangers and our private hangars, that, for example, you can't have hazardous chemicals of any sort. And then we do have both aviation fuel and a hundred low lead fuel for aircraft at the airport, tremendous numbers of both of those being sold right now. Those are in double-walled tanks, and then we're taking additional, looking at taking additional steps to, you know, kind of mitigate any accidents that could happen there, but...
And I think those insights and the mitigation steps that you're taking will be helpful as we, that's a popular area, and how do we sensitively deal with what those requests are. Certainly, if you've found a way to mitigate that where you feel comfortable, it's something we could emulate as well.
Maybe if I can just, not to be too picky here, but under the two thousand twenty-three projects for Clay County, that Substance Use Crisis Center, we've kind of gotten away from referring to it as that.
Okay.
We have a different name.
Withdrawal Management.
Withdrawal Management.
Withdrawal Management. That word crisis can be kind of...
Sure.
So it's...
Yeah, we can update the document.
I just think, you know, if we're going to, it might be good just to...
I think it's Withdrawal Management Detoxification Unit is the, is that the final thing we came up with? WMD, which is a little ominous, but...
Sure. We can follow up, Steve, and we can make sure that we get that.
I just think for future...
Yes.
...presentations and stuff, we just want to get away from calling it that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Bet.
I think, you know, obviously legislative session is underway here. We've had, obviously, a lot of different conversations about it. You know, Lisa Bodie and Dan Molly and Shelley, Marmayor Shelley Carlson are the ones that kind of look at those outcomes, but certainly from my standpoint, as I projected to the county before, we're here to kind of listen to the businesses and try to figure out what the pinch points are. There's no doubt about it, earned, sick, and safe, and paid family medical leave are two points that are challenging, so I know a few of us are going down next week to the Morehead Area Day at the Capitol with the Chamber, so looking forward to those conversations and how we can kind of continue to spread our voice at St. Paul and make sure we have the support that we need.
And one of the successes for legislative efforts has been the Eleventh Street Underpass, which is being undertaken by MinDOT, and will be starting shortly. We'll start to see some building demolition first, with some major construction starting around the First Avenue area and then moving south throughout the next couple of years. We also saw a number of activities related to sustainability and resilience. The one that I am really proud of that I just want to hit on here is our, it was our pilot year for community garden grants. This is something that we've heard quite a bit, that the community was interested in some sort of community garden. We knew from the city's standpoint that we did not have the park staff available to be able to operate a community garden from the city's standpoint, so we did five hundred dollar micro grants to three religious organizations, and they were an extreme success this year. So we were just really proud of how those turned out. We will be doing more grants in two thousand twenty-four. We also saw a number of plans and studies, most of them undertaken by MetroCog and other organizations in conjunction with the county as well, and have a number that are in progress. Just really quickly on permits, the green line that you see here is the Morehead High School project, which was obviously a historic project as well as a historic permit. So when you take that green out, you can really see just how successful two thousand twenty-three is. And from a permit perspective, you know, we were the number-one highest year in the past ten years for the total number of residential and commercial construction permits, number two for commercial project valuation, and number three for residential and commercial construction project valuation. So just a really, really great year.
Kristi, if you don't mind going back to that graph, too, I'll just maybe, one more back, please. You know, I think it's worth stressing, and most of the time when I go out and have conversations with the community about the commercial side of things, the business development side of things, when you look at two thousand twenty-two, a lot of people look at that kind of lower blue number where it's about seventeen million in new construction, but the orange is the commercial remodels, and I think that is a really telling story and probably one of our most challenging years from a development standpoint. But what that fifty million dollars in the orange represents is businesses that reinvested within their properties that made roots in Morehead and Clay County. They had options at that point in time, they certainly could have went other places or shut down, but I think that's a really telling story that people took roots in Morehead and in Clay County during that stretch. Obviously, in two thousand twenty-three, seeing that blue number and the new businesses start to expand tells us that we're getting some vitality back, we're showing some confidence in the market, but still a very strong number at thirty-five, almost thirty-six million with the remodels as well. So we got a good, healthy balance of new, but also one of the more important numbers, I think, is people taking that value in their property and in their business and reinvesting.
The EDA a few years ago had, did a little shift as far as marketing goes, from, you know, traditional print marketing to what we call experience marketing, which was to try to create new events, make people see places in new ways. And the last couple of years have been very, very successful. In two thousand twenty-three, we saw the Build a Ton-a-Thon, which went fantastically, Movie in the Garden with some additional activities at the Heritage Garden Amphitheater at Woodlawn Park. Our River Arts Events expanded to add additional cultural events, music, art, and a whole number of things. We added a number of things, like you'll see the Blue Box here, the Morehead mural, the selfie station, just really trying to create new experiences here in Morehead. Through our Art and Culture Commission, we wrapped three new utility boxes in art from local artists this year, and we also had one private donation, which was the one that you see on A Street and Twelfth Avenue. We have the Community Center Library undergoing. We are now moving into the construction document phase, hoping to get started on that project this summer. And we also had Sunset on the Riverfront that unfortunately got canceled because of weather in two thousand twenty-three, but will be back and will be great in two thousand twenty-four. Couple of things, again, all of these because of partnerships. We installed seventeen new interpretation signs along the River Corridor Trail this year because of a grant through River Keepers and the HDR Foundation. We saw Midtown Trail, which connected Gooseberry and Woodlawn Parks, and because of that connection, we are now on U.S. Bike Route Twenty. We saw the Inclusive Playground constructed at South Side Regional Park. We are still fundraising for this and hope to put some fencing around it. Received a grant for pickleball courts at Hansman Court, as well as a boat dock, accessible boat dock at MB Johnson. FM Rotary, huge project at River Park here in Morehead, Natural Play Hill, and we got a Clay County Partnership for Health grant. This was actually a request from citizens who wanted to see benches in South Side Regional Park, so we listened, Partnership for Health granted a grant, and we put in five new benches. We do have a community fund through the FM Area Foundation, which we continue to raise money for, for a number of amenities throughout the community. And just really quickly, Derek had already touched on the legislative priorities, but we have a number of projects that are also underway. Again, the Community Center Library, fundraising for Matson Field has went tremendously, and then we also have a ten million dollar grant for Reimagine Romke, so we're hoping to get started on designs on that project as well.
And I'll just mention, obviously, what's to come here. We have a lot of activity on the site for the Morehead Center Mall, so if you haven't driven down Center Avenue, I'd encourage you, over the last few weeks, there's been a lot of progress on the demolition of Herberger's space. Now you can kind of see all the way down that corridor, that's along that hallway. Obviously, working with Roars, but a bunch of other developers on the project site itself. So we've been doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work with infrastructure layout, where new roads will go, where new utilities will go, defining the actual parcel. You can imagine the messiness of the survey and the plat that was existing there, so trying to clean all that up and get that to a point where we can sell. Last night, we had at City Council a land swap agreement between Roars, the city, and Kevin Bartram that will obviously get him to a point of starting on that United Sugar's Parking Lot building. As mentioned, the Renaissance Zone application is in, and we'll see that be processed next week, Monday, at EDA and later in March for the City Council. So it's an exciting time, there's a lot of things that are moving. One thing as we kind of close, you know, this report has been done in the past by the City of Morehead, and Kristi and her team and the Community Development Department has kind of been a big lead in it. We have some new staff in the Communication and Marketing Department that really look to expand this. We obviously use this presentation for a lot of different community programs, whether it's Rotary or Kiwanis, you name it. But one thing that we were really hoping to kind of transfer is, obviously, this PowerPoint is large, it's got great pictures in it, but we're looking to refine this and have this as a lay-down, as a trifold or a front and back page when we're going out and meeting with new residents, whether it's working through realtors, commercial or residential, new businesses, prospective businesses, you name it. We want to be able to have something that can showcase what's happening in our community. We don't want to let the hearsay or just the, as we all know, the kind of reputation sometimes Morehead and Clay County gets from our media partners at times, so this is a way that we can tell our own story with simple facts and data that, obviously, we can all be proud of, whether it's you're in the City of Morehead Limits or all of Clay County as well. We're growing, we're seeing lots of great potential for our future, so hopefully, we can kind of continue to build on this year after year, but have documents that we can use in St. Paul or locally here as well. So we thank you for the opportunity to present some of the highlights in two thousand twenty-three. Any questions from the commission?
No questions, just a comment, it's looking real good for Morehead, glad to see that.
Appreciate that.
I'll just make another observation. The growth that in my district, District Five in South Morehead, has been phenomenal, both with multifamily buildings going up. The, I've never seen the development in Azul take hold like it has in the last year, year and a half. Really gratifying to see that. Grew by the other day and looked over, and there's another lot being broken, I don't know what, but it's going to be next to the Starbucks they're putting in.
Yeah, if I can, that, it's just a great story of working with our partners within the Morehead Center Mall, so that's Dr. Casey Barts and Dr. Stan Andrus that are breaking ground on the new eye clinic, but they also have two additional retail stores that will be for lease next to them as well, so just a great story of them finding a new spot.
Even beyond that, because my old guy's coffee group, we were, you know, there's a big speculation on what the lot is next to Starbucks. I think Morehead Optical, which now is where I'll be getting my glasses because of the commitment they've made to our community...
Yeah.
...is going to be in the building that's already in the dry...
Sure.
...back just, just north of the main center itself, but it's exciting to see that happen, to see the things that are growing. And downtown, I'm on the library board, and it's a very exciting time for us there. You've been integral on that.
Appreciate that.
And I'll plug Clay County. We are part of the Eleventh Street Overpass project with a major financial commitment, and we've been good partners, and we look forward to working with City of Morehead, particularly in St. Paul, where we need to have a unified front to go in there and work with the legislature. So it's really exciting, and again, I hope, I hope we can continue the partnership with Downtown Morehead, Inc., and with the city even further than we are right now.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Mr. Moshe.
Follow-up, thank you. This is fantastic. This report is great. Thank you for pulling it together, thanks for the work that goes into the presentation. Derek, we are on a couple of boards together where we talk about how do we tell our story? And that's, that's a thoughtful question, because so often I hear the same comments from you as, man, there's a lot of empty buildings, or it looks like things are going elsewhere. And while that may be true to a point, there is a lot of growth happening, and how do we, how are we better about telling that story in tricky times? So I think we need to continue to be better about that. I will say that the collaboration is better than it's ever been since my time on this commission. I'll speak a little bit to the legislative component. I have been in St. Paul once with you already this year, Derek, and the other part, Kristi, was to talk about some Morehead projects as well. And, and I will call Derek on my way home from St. Paul, and I think the collaboration is what our strength will be in advocating in St. Paul, in telling our story here, in taking the critiques and the challenges that we may be experiencing and figuring out how we can creatively address that, because there are a lot of great components going in. And I will say that because I follow athletics, I'm going to a lot of different schools and areas around the state, and we really have some great things in Clay County in terms of the education infrastructure. That's, that's not like other places in the state. We have really, as a county, our citizens have really doubled down on that, and that's, that's really exciting. So thank you for giving us this information so that we can help you tell your specific story, as well as the other stories of our cities within the county, but great work.
And I'll just mention, too, and not to put more work on People's Blades, too, but I think there could be value in looking at a collective kind of Clay County presentation like this, too. So whether that's assembling pictures and getting a group together that can tell that story for Clay County as well, because I think it all goes hand in hand, to your point, Commissioner, it's working together, but showing that collective unity of we're all growing because of a reason, because of the values, I think, that are set here and the consistency within the government that is created here as well. So if there's ways that we can find partnerships to tell a larger story, I think we're more than open to looking and exploring into that as well.
Chair, I think this, I agree, this is a great report. Thank you both for your involvement in it. And I, you know, I think this is exactly why I certainly encouraged in this board up the ante in investing in your work, and I think it's paying off. It's paying off, and I think we're just beginning to see some of the things that can happen that would greatly benefit all of Clay County here. I do have a question in regards to the Eleventh Street Underpass, and it's, it's not a question that I have, but it's a question that a lot of my constituents, because it's, this falls within my district, have, and that is just, if we can, if we can do something to improve the timeline and their understanding of when things are going to be happening, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of unknowns there.
Yeah.
What's coming to me, anyway, when is this going to be closed? One of these, one of these buildings is going to go down? Is this building going to stay? There's just a lot of questions that I think we could probably do better in messaging in that regard, but, but overall, and I'm anxious to see this Matson Field thing take off, too, that's in my neighborhood, and I, I've become kind of a youth baseball fan since the days when I played, but that's a long time ago, by the way.
If I can, I can, if I can, and I know Kristi will probably mention a few things, too, so on the Eleventh Street Underpass, we feel the same way. So there is a contract right now, I think, with DOT, and this is all coming hearsay through Engineering Department from the City of Morehead, but the contractor will be required to bring on a communications specialist for the project. It's one thing that we requested and wanted, because a lot of times it fell on, you know, whether it's local or somebody to tell it, and it's a lot to kind of compute with every change that's happening on a daily, weekly basis. So the hope is that we'll have our hands in that process of who's selected. You know, hopefully, that's somebody that is experienced with construction management and communication. I don't, you know, as an example, it's like Flint Communications does a lot for the City of Fargo with a lot of their road projects. Not saying that that's the group, but we expect that will hopefully be happening within the next few weeks here so we can start doing it, because with groundbreaking fastly approaching, we want to make sure people are ready for any change that's coming and know where to get around, but also how we support those businesses that we just talked about that took root there as well. We need to make sure that they're feeling comfortable with the changes and knowing that people are still going to be able to get to their front door as well.
Right, you know, I think one of my favorite places that I go to is the Horn, the original Hornbacher's, right? Hornbacher's right downtown. And that's going to have a major impact. And I think being able to tell people their ways to get there, we need to, some of those businesses, we're going to need to support them in that times when a lot of roads are going to be closed.
Yeah, I'm very grateful. At Downtown Morehead, Inc., we have Matt Lyseth, President of Hornbacher's, on our board. This year, we actually moved him to our executive committee. So we meet on a monthly basis. And it was, I think, very crucial to include Matt in that process just because of how impactful Hornbacher's is to that corridor. But he can be a voice for kind of that process of change and how we communicate as well. So I think we're going to lean on Matt as a large business and community provider within that area that can share the impacts that are happening, but also how we can effectively communicate better too.
Just one more observation I want to make is we've got some vital partners on this side of the river that really make us stand out. And that's the DGF School District and Morehead School District. With the Career Development Center, we've got, with the phenomenal culture around spuds that Morehead High has. And it's a welcoming, good school district. And I worked with that as chief through our school resource officers. And we have wonderful faculty. We have great people involved in that. And we've had some very impressive reports back from DGF just recently in one of our group meetings, the joint powers that we had referenced childcare and the innovative things they're doing out there. Those are the things that will attract people into our community residentially and keep the impressive numbers we've got. And there's been a lot of investment by our taxpayers into those school districts and their premier. And they should be put forward. In the region, I think you can't get a better education for your kid. So we've got a lot to work with. You've done a great job for us and we appreciate it. Our return on investment has been phenomenal, working with Downtown Morehead, Inc. And again, City Morehead's a great partner. We need to continue with that.
Yeah. I can't do it alone. Obviously, we got great people that we work with through Clay County and the city as well. So this is a team effort. And, you know, we try to really take in the public's kind of message and how we kind of evolve and change. And, you know, it's not a couple of different people that think they know best, right? It's coming from the grassroots of the public and how we can support. So appreciate the support that Clay County has provided to us. Thanks for taking the time this morning.
Yeah, one last thing. You know, I've sung the praises of your work, Derek. And I guess probably while I have Christie here, I should probably sing the praises of her work too. Christie, I've worked with you for a long time on a lot of projects, going back to the days of the Oakbrook annexation and the issues there. And I think you do a terrific job. And I just wanted to point that out, so.
It's very important. And I will tell you right now, obviously, economic development's one thing, but I've traveled with my first job with TMI Hospitality doing development across the country. And without having a very strong and productive and clear planning and community development department, you go nowhere. I've been a part of four, five-hour planning commission meetings, and you can see the stress of businesses that said, no more, never again. And Christie and her team do an excellent job. So we're very grateful to have a group that has a commitment to finding ways to figure things out and not just saying, here's what it is, figure it out. So kudos to Christie and her team as well.
Any other questions? Thank you, gang. And I agree with the observations made on Ms. Lysefsky. And she was fun to work with, too. Made the, what do we call those, ELT meetings?
Yeah.
A little easier to take.
Mr. Chair, quickly, I'm just really excited that your kids came with. I know as a parent, that's challenging on e-learning days, but to have young folks be aware of how government works is really exciting. And to also have future PGA members are really exciting as well. So.
I told them that they didn't behave, you know, the sheriff's here, the jail's nearby.
Those are some.
Let's stick with the PGA. They make more money.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. So thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next, we have Rhonda with us. Request to approve to adjust a variable hour social worker position to full time in the social services department.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. That's a tough act to follow. I should thank Derek and Christie for getting y'all in a good mood. All right. Jessica and I are here this morning to request approval to increase a .4 variable hour social work position to a full-time social work position. And I'll just kind of preface our ask, and then Jessica could give a little bit more detail about what our program does. What we're looking for is this is in our special needs basic care program. We have currently just 1.4 staff allocated to this program, although we do use some case aid time, as well as Jessica's time, of course, supervising this program, as well as our auditor time. This is a contract with a managed care organization, Ucare. We've been doing special needs basic care coordination for a number of years. We did it under a Medica contract in the past as well as Ucare. But right now, it's just Ucare as our provider. We do earn revenue based on our activity and we get paid from Ucare. Currently, Public Health provides this care coordination as well. So when referrals come in, we share them with Public Health. This program underwent some contract changes in 2023. Starting in October, there was some contract changes that ultimately, which we knew was going to result in some increased referrals to us and some decreased revenues. However, so this is a piece we'll want to watch over time. However, we do feel that the revenue that we've been able to generate with this work is sufficient enough to cover the costs. And we'd like to continue the relationship with Ucare at this point. I have budgeted in the 2024 budget an anticipated revenue of $300,000. Based on the contract changes and what the revenue has been looking like, we anticipate receiving about $375,000. So that increased revenue, which would carry over into 2025 and ongoing, would cover the cost of increasing that .4 variable hour position to full time. Any questions about that so far?
Does that include 2025?
Correct, yes. So that is what we're requesting. And maybe I'll let Jessica just explain a little bit about what care coordination for this population looks like.
So SMBC works with adults aged 18 to 64 who have a disability. And the primary purpose of care coordination, it's kind of like a medical case manager. So they're there to help these individuals access healthcare and other supportive services. So it's not as quite in-depth as what our waiver case managers do. Therefore, they're able to have a larger caseload size, but they still work very closely with ensuring that any chronic health conditions, that these individuals are accessing the correct community services for them. So prior to the care coordination redesign that Ucare went through in 2023, we averaged a monthly caseload size of anywhere between 90 to 180 members. We currently have 531 members on our SMBC caseload for the 1.4 staff. So it was a significant jump. Some of that was anticipated. However, we did not know that Medica was not going to renew their contract to provide SMBC in Clay County. Therefore, all of the people in Clay County who are eligible for SMBC then moved over to the Ucare caseload. So that was part of why our caseload had this significant jump. Plus, with healthcare unwinding, we just didn't know if some people would be losing their medical assistance. And so we just weren't sure what to anticipate. So we wanted to give it a little bit of time, but consistently, we've seen that this caseload is going to be in the 500s. And that is just for social services. Public Health has a very similar caseload size.
Commissioner Campbell.
Jessica, so right now, the request is to move this one variable hour to full time. How many others work in this area?
We have the one, we have 1.4 currently. So we've got one FTE and a .4 variable hour. And then they receive case aid support as well.
And then Public Health has two?
And Public Health currently has two full-time employees and case aid support.
Mr. Kravina.
Yeah, I'm just curious. So when you had this arrangement with Ucare, is that a contract you work with them for like, how long? Or what are the periods of time?
Correct. We have a contract with them. We've had a contract with them for years for this product, as well as targeted case management, as well as some of our comprehensive assessments and treatment coordination. And Public Health does as well. So we've had a contract with them for a number of years, although this particular piece underwent some reform in 2023.
So obviously, it looks like something you build on for the long term.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Mr. Campbell.
Well, I got a question else.
Mr. Gross.
I was just going to say, we discussed as a pick committee and, you know, with the projection of the revenue, additional revenue income and stuff like that, we felt that's appropriate to do this motion.
Mr. Campbell.
Rhonda or Jessica, so the revenue that this creates can't exceed 50% of the, a lot of our revenues that we get, we can receive revenue up to 50%.
Yeah, this program is not under that federal financial participation like we have in our financial services division. So this is different. This is an absolute reimbursement through Ucare based on what the number of clients we're serving and how we're serving them. So it is different in that regard.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion, no. Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to support this. I think the revenues indicate that it's worthy of doing it. I just, I do want to caution us this early in the year when we start adding new positions that, you know, I know it's, some of these things, they make a case for it, but I must remind our board that we're also doing a wedge study this year. And we have no idea yet as to what that's going to do to our proposed budgets that we might be having come forward. So I think we really need to be looking cautiously at all of these things that are being requested. But I am going to support this one. I think the revenue certainly shows that it's worth it, so.
Further discussion?
I just want to thank Rhonda. You know, when you're asking for something, you're coming with a presentation to show us how you're going to pay for it. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, if not, all in favor of the motion indicate speaking aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yep.
Yeah, if it's appropriate. Rhonda, I want to thank you for all the work you've done the last couple of weeks while you're here.
Thank you.
And for the resolutions toward the PRTF. And obviously, you know, we know that has a House file now. And so working toward it.
All right, thank you.
Also, I was remiss. I didn't introduce Jessica Mickelson. Your supervisor came in and you came prepared and backed your boss up well.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we've got some bids to open. Justin Soram, our county engineer, we're opening bids for SAP 014-601-008.
Yes, so this is the paving on Casal 1 from Casal 20 to Casal 26 that we graded two years ago. So we did, we did receive five bids. And in order to complete a bid on our online bidding software, they do have to have a bid bond in the amount of 5%. So every bid that I read today does have a accompanying bid bond as well. So I will start first by saying the engineer's estimate is on the sheets that I handed out at $1,597,994.00. The first bid we received was from Central Specialties Incorporated. Their bid is $1,679,953.80. The second bid we received was from Knife River Materials. Their bid is $1,474,122.22. The next bid we received was from Border States Paving. Their bid is $1,469,619.10. The fourth bid we received was from RJ Zaverell &amp; Sons. Their bid is $1,460,229.73.14. And the final bid we received was from Mark Sand &amp; Gravel Company. Their bid is $1,557,481.70. So I do, obviously, RJ Zaverell &amp; Sons is the apparent low bidder. We've worked with them a lot over the last couple of years. Last year, they did Casal 18 and did a really nice job. So my recommendation would be to approve the low bid of RJ Zaverell &amp; Sons.
Any questions for Justin?
Do you have to go through and review any quantity issues or anything like that?
No. So the nice thing about electronic bids is the numbers are what they are. There is no chance for math errors like when we've done paper bids in the past. So I have no reservation in approving the low bid today.
Mr. Chair, I'd move the low bid to accepting a little bit of RJ Zaverell in the amount of $1,460,229.73.
Second, the motion.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
Since we talked about Rhonda, I also want to talk about Justin. We do have a companion House and Senate filed bill to discuss the repair on Casal 26. So thanks also for your work. It is also awesome when our department heads really help elevate the need for issues to us and we're able to work collaboratively with our representatives and senators to get the job done. So we're hopeful, but thank you for the huge work it took.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Rhonda back again with Karen Severson and Michaela Waderek. Request approval to hire an eligibility worker and case aid with state appropriation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Okay, we did bring this topic to the pick committee last Tuesday as well. This one's a little bit more involved. In your packet was a two-page summary sheet and then an Excel spreadsheet that I'm going to kind of reference. I apologize for the small type set on that. But just to preface the conversation first, I'd like to introduce you to Michaela. Michaela Waderek is our new financial assistance supervisor in our income maintenance unit. She took over for Jamie Stewart, who resigned this last year. So she's been an amazing addition. She was an eligibility worker with us before being appointed. And she also worked for another county as well and did work in eligibility work. So we're thrilled to have her with us today in her first board meeting. All right. Okay, so if you recall, back in May, we came before you, in May of 2023, we came before you to talk about a state appropriation that all counties were allocated by Minnesota, the Minnesota Legislature and the Department of Human Services to help counties with the, what's being called the healthcare unwinding. So after the public health emergency and the pandemic. So after the public health emergency and the pandemic, many of our folks on medical, public health program, medical assistance in Minnesota Care, maintained their eligibility throughout the pandemic. Renewal processes were, were stopped for a period of time. And so now we're in what we're calling this unwinding phase. And based on the work that is involved in this catching up with renewals where folks had over three years to not have to provide information to us, we knew and the state knew that this was gonna be a tremendous amount of work on the counties. So allocations were appropriated, and in one of the handouts, you'll see there, it was based on March of 2023, what our caseload was. And so you'll see we had 17,682 individuals on a public health program, and we were allocated $461,139. That came to us in a lump payment in 2023, and we have that amount sitting in our budget. So then in May, we came before you with a request to utilize those funds. And subsequently, we've come before you with a few additional requests. And that's what that Excel spreadsheet shows you. So just to maybe walk through that a little bit, at the, at the top, over to the, on the right, in the grade column, it shows the $461,139 that we received. In May, you approved us to hire two eligibility workers with those funds. One of the things that we learned since then is that, this goes to your question, Commissioner Campbell, about the 50% federal financial reimbursement that we get. We did not realize that we would still be able to capture that federal financial reimbursement on those two eligibility workers and then use this allocation to make up the difference. So our allocation is going to be able to go a little bit further in terms of our spending. So that's calculated in here. Our first staff was hired in, let's see, August, and then the, the second one in October of 2023. We unfortunately had some turnover in there. And so we've, this spreadsheet shows you what we've actually spent for those two staff thus far, and then projecting out what it would cost all the way through June of 2026. And then this spreadsheet also adds, if you were to approve the additional staff that we're requesting today, which is one eligibility worker and one case aid, what that would cost us starting in April of 2024 and going through June of 2026. So bottom line, with all of that, those staffing patterns, as well as some other software solutions that you've approved since then, we would still have a balance of 50, way up at the top, $59,669 if you were to approve the positions today and assuming the cost of the other two that you approved going forward. I think Darren is sick of my requests for wage calculations because we, he completed the wage calculations for us, and we used worst-case scenario with, you know, higher insurance costs and that kind of thing. So that is what we're requesting today, to use these funds to bring on some additional staff to help us with workload. And I ask Karen and Michaela to be able to talk a little bit about what a renewal process looks like and what the complexities are that we're experiencing with this work. But is there any questions so far in terms just about the funding and what we're proposing?
Questions?
Okay, so Karen or Michaela, do you wanna just talk a little bit about the workload?
Absolutely. So I'll speak a little bit today just about the sheer volume of the workload that is on our workers currently. Currently, we have 17,235 people enrolled in medical assistance of some form with our programs. That means the amount of renewals each month vary anywhere between 1,300 to over 1,500 a month. And those average about 45 minutes per renewal, and we only currently have seven staff allocated to this. So not nearly enough as what we need. And it's a very complex process in this unwinding period because the state is constantly making changes to the way they do things, procedures, protocols, lots of additional time for our workers spent just making sure we're up to date with those current procedures and doing things correctly for, for our clients. Karen is gonna speak a little bit more about that.
So along with the renewals that are coming in, we also have clients that are still applying for medical assistance. And we get about 25 new applications per week. And that also takes about 45 minutes to an hour to complete those. We have to get information regarding their income, property they own, bank accounts, health insurance that they may already have, their health status, whether they have a disability, whether they're pregnant, any other verification required by law, so that all takes time. They're also receiving 30 to 50 phone calls per week, which takes time. And with the laws that are constantly changing, we just found out on Friday at one of our healthcare leadership meetings that Minnesota Care, which previously, they were, they were doing all the renewals. It's called a mixed renewal. If a household had eligible participants in Minnesota Care and on Medicaid, Minnesota Care was doing the renewal for us. Now we found out that we will be doing the renewals for Minnesota Care and Medicaid, which in, that will start in July. So we will be seeing that the end of May, which will triple our renewals. So that is just gonna put more stress on our current staff.
What is the residency requirement to? How long they have to live in Minnesota to file for this?
They have to be in Minnesota for 30 days.
Wow. That's a long time.
Does that change affect you positively or negatively when it comes to revenue sources? Are there reimbursements for what you're doing?
Yep, yep, the revenue that we've been receiving has been about 52% for the federal financial participation in this area. And so that is on the spreadsheet. Although we list all the costs of the staff positions, we are applying that reimbursement as well to these positions.
And what I, maybe a little more specific, did the Medicaid, the Medicaid piece, by doing that, change anything? Does that add, or, I'm just saying it's more work, so is that a different source?
It's, no, it won't be a different source. It's really just that 52%, however, I'm, I'm not sure with this new information whether we will see any new allocations or any considerations given about the additional workload that it would require. I haven't heard that at this point.
Given, given that, are we looking at, I, just for some context, are we still working on the backlog? Or is this a consistent level that we can anticipate into the future?
No, we are still working on the backlog, and maybe you can speak to that a little bit?
Currently, we're working on the backlog, but I, the trend is it's consistently growing. We're not, we're not decreasing anything at all with the new applications coming in. I looked at population, total participants in 2014. We had 14,148, and in 2022, it was 17,235. So it grew by 4%, and it's just keeping on growing, and I don't see that changing.
An observation Commissioner Campbell made in the last request, and this is obviously funded, and, and I'm comfortable with that. If we are going to look at this as permanent positions, we gotta keep two things in mind. One is, and we discussed this in PIC, that with the attrition you've got in social workers and, and the folks doing this work, if the workload decreases because the backlog's been addressed, we need to look at shaving, taking an attrition, and backing off of the position. If not, it's, it doesn't sound to me like there's a guarantee of any consistent funding in the future for this. Am I correct in, in that observation?
Correct, I'm not aware that any additional funding will occur. So yes, that is, that is the primary concern, of course. As laying this out in this way, I carried it through June of 2026. So we will have opportunities along the way that we will make sure that we're continually assessing this and bringing that information before you. One thing I would note, in the last six months, so since September of 2023, we have had the turnover of five eligibility workers and one supervisor in that unit. And so that is, makes it very difficult to even get the added staff up to speed. So I feel like we have not felt the benefit of the added staff, even funded under this, because of this turnover. But it does, you know, we have some unique circumstances, so hopefully that trend and turnover won't continue. But with attrition, over time, we know that it's gonna happen, so we would be wanting to continue to evaluate this as you approve replacement of positions. And we would expect to bring that forward to you.
Commissioner Campbell.
I'm assuming that when the state appropriated these healthcare unwinding funds, they did it for the purpose of catching, for counties to catch up?
Yes, absolutely.
Right, so, so they're going to, what Commissioner Everick said, it's one-time money?
Yes.
So you, you had mentioned that in 2014, your numbers were 14,000, and now they're 17,000?
Yep.
Have you added any additional staff between 2000 and 14 and, and today, or in 2022?
Yes.
So there was, so that increase of 4%, there were additional staff as time went on?
Yes.
That were increased to also offset that demand on, on?
Yep.
Your time?
Yes.
Right, okay. I just, it's pretty interesting that, so we're looking at like 20, 26% of our population, somewhere that area is on MA?
Yeah, we did, based on the conversation at the pick committee, we did go back and look at, we could pull some data on, that's some of the demographics of our population, and in 20, the latest, or earliest data available is in 2022. And we had 41.6% of that population were between 0 and 19, so kids. A good percentage of those are kids. And then we had about 10% age 65 and older, and then between 20 and 64, 22%. So, you know, again, good number that are kids. And I, I was expecting a larger population of the 65 and older, so that number kind of surprised me a bit.
Would those be people that are in the long-term nursing care that have exhausted their?
Most, most likely, yes. Yes.
Certainly something we wanna maintain.
Yep, for sure, yep.
Do we track figures at all who are in longtime Minnesota residents or people who just moved here?
I don't think, no, yeah. It's possible that the State Department of Human Services might have that in their data warehouse, maybe based on date of application and how long they're on a particular program. But when I think about the application, I don't know that it has a question specifically, how long have you been a resident of Minnesota? Aside from establishing that 30-day, are you aware of any?
Mr. Chair, I, you know, I, you know, I think if these funds were sent down to this, for the state for, for a given purpose, I, it certainly seems to me that that's what we should use those funds for. I, I would throw a caution out there that, that these funds are one-time funds. And, you know, it's kind of like Rhonda, when we went through ARPA and CAREs, those dollars that were involved back then, you know, we, we did some things, but we did them that were time-specific, you know, to go along with the, which, what the funds were for. You know, so I, you know, I think if we approve this, I think we, which, which I'm gonna, I'll support approving, but I also think that we need to somehow flag this like we, like we did for additional CAREs and ARPA positions, that they went through, as you said, did you say it was gonna go through April of 2026?
I calculated it out through June of 2026.
Whatever that date is, but I think at that time, then, then, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that should be brought back up for review.
Sure, absolutely.
That's, I guess that's what I'm saying, is, is just not then considered to be just a, we're gonna do it today and they're gonna become permanent positions. You know, because a lot of factors can change, and, and I don't wanna hold some future board to, to that decision without having a review of that, so. So, Mr. Chair, I would, I would, I would make a motion to, no, I did want, this was also, what was the recommendation of PIC?
PIC, send it forward.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, I would, I would move that we approve these two positions and fund them through, through these dollars through June of 2026. And, and backfill if necessary.
Thank you, yes.
Hey, we have a motion, and Commissioner Gross, backfill was part of your second?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion in a second, any further discussion or any?
I just have one question. So just, just as we go forward, I'm making note on, here on the back, that you do, when do they determine your base? Is that, is that a number you give them at what time of year? And when do you know your allocation?
We, they already determined the base, they based it on March of 2023 numbers. And then that allocation they determined was the 461,139. So we already, that is our base.
Then that's the one-time?
Yep.
Okay.
And we have.
Just so I was clear on that, there's nothing ongoing about that base number for any other reason?
And we have received those funds, they are in our 2023 budget. So what we will do is we'll work to carry forward that lump amount and track each expenditure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can ask one additional question, so going to Commissioner Kravina's question in term, where we put them on the grid, for example, and where they start, when it comes to eligibility, federal eligibility dollars, does that, does that, if they get an increase, does that also then increase that amount that we're able to collect?
Correct.
The 50% match rises as they, they go up the chart?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
If I could just ask one clarifying. So we'd like to post these positions as full-time permanent positions, not grant-funded positions that end in June of 2026. We would just, we'd post them as permanent positions, and then we would communicate with the board over time. And when we have attrition, we would continue to evaluate that, is that acceptable?
I guess my, my motion was that it, that it would be for this period of time. I, I guess, you know, I, I'm, I'm okay with the idea in mind that, again, the whole idea is that this has to be reviewed because of one-time money. And, you know, if, if those two people happen to stay on, two other people leave, and we, we have a hard time coming up with the funds, then, then there's no harm, no foul, I guess, right? But I, I just.
Is that something we'd flag in the budget process?
We certainly can do that, I think, as you mentioned, and we talked in PIC, I think one of the things that Rhonda and her staff agreed to do was to come and provide an update, like she has an Excel spreadsheet here on an annual basis.
Okay. Does that address your concerns?
Well, I, yeah, I, you know, again, I, my, my motion was that these two positions would be through June of 2026. And I, I understand the, the potential hiring issue. I just don't know how to get around that, because I, you know, once the funds are gone, there, I, I don't know that, you know, and, and again, part of this, the whole, the whole purpose behind this, where these were funds to help catch up. And at some point in time, hopefully, you're caught up. You know, and then at what point then, what staff level is needed at that time? And that's why there has to be a review.
Yep. Would it be acceptable? Would it be acceptable if we, you know, post these positions, not with a caveat that they're slated to end in June of 2026, but we post them, we hire, and then as we have turnover in the unit, we bring this expenditure tracking, so that it's kind of at the forefront every time we come before you when we have attrition, turnover issues? And we evaluate where we're at in comparison with caseload, workload, and decision to move forward?
Mr. Chair, I struggle a little bit with it, and I understand exactly what you're saying, I just think in terms of clarity and how we evaluate during the budget process, we've talked a lot in public health about grant-funded positions, and understanding this maybe isn't specifically grant-funded, but I think you can communicate in your advertisement that this is addressed through a funding stream that's allocated to go through the state. Part of the need then, as this person works through it, is to justify how it will continue to be needed. And so, you know, I'm just not sure that-
My motion, yes?
No.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering, so, so right now, am I correct in, based on what was said, there's seven people doing this work right now, and so, right, so that would bring that to nine, right? So, I'm just wondering about the possibility of talking about adjusting the number of positions to nine as opposed to seven through 2026, or through June of 2026? And then, and at that point in time, that number nine would have to, would fall back to seven, you know, unless the review would warrant that it stay there. Then, then it's just a matter of, then it becomes, to me, that would become an internal part on your part, where you've got, you've got till June to have nine, and so you can hire these people with the idea in mind that they're permanent. But at some point in time, through attrition or whatever, or there's resignation, you said there's already, you go through five already, that, you know, but at some point in time, there has to be something that gets us back to where we were without these dollars. And I don't, you know, I-
What you're describing is a grant-funded position.
Right, because that's basically what it is.
I'm comfortable with that. We keep talking about July 26th, and somehow, we have to be aware in the budget in '25. I mean, so, we're going to need to know, unfortunately, by September '25, kind of where we're at on it, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely. I, that's a logical point in that 2026 budgeting process, when we start that in 2025, to lay out exactly where we're at, what our expenditures have been, what the attrition looks like. And the board would have the opportunity to, to make that decision for the 2026 budget. And it would allow us a fair amount of time to manage that transition too, with the staffing pattern that we have.
And in that budget, be able to, at that time, justify the nine if it so be.
Right.
That's where I'm very comfortable with.
Yeah, but I guess my original motion, though, basically said, these two, you know, these two would basically be hired through, and I guess, Mr. Chair, I'm going to suggest an amendment to my own motion.
Go ahead.
And that would be to change that to increasing the number of personnel in that department from seven to nine through the period of June of 2026, at which time, without further evidence, it would revert back to seven.
Ms. Larson, is that something that is compatible with, that we could memorialize it to where you could make that evaluation at the time?
Mr. Chair, we, I think we need a second before we can have further discussion.
Well, you had a second.
Well, but on my amendment, though, there's no-
I'll second the amendment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Ms. Larson, is that something that we could memorialize to where we make sure it gets-
You can work with the Social Service Department and ensure that, again, like we talked about, that there's an update, and we'll make sure that we discuss it with Lori and myself each year.
But, but, Mr. Chair, I think this amended motion, the way it's stated, it would allow you to advertise these as full-time positions.
Sure, yeah.
With the idea, you know, because we also know that over time, there can be attrition, as you even said, you've had five, and, you know, but, you know, and then that gives you time to, for us to review this, but.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just for the amendment now.
Yeah, so we first, yeah, we vote on the amended motion.
Okay, we have an amendment and a second on the floor. Unless somebody needs clarification, we can vote right now. All in favor of the amendment indicating this as positions to be reevaluated in June of '26?
Going from seven to nine through June of 2026?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Can we move back to the main motion? Do we have any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor?
It's the main motion as amended, right?
As amended. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you for, there's a lot of information, and you've had to do it twice, and you came back with more from the PEC meeting, so, very good, we appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chair, I was wondering, in the first presentation, did that motion include the availability to backfill?
You didn't address backfill in that, in that motion.
Is it possible to amend that motion on the SMBC position?
Can't amend a passed motion.
Well, but just a question, though, so, we-
Hold on, Ms. Milton?
Yeah.
Okay.
But just, but just a question in general, because what we did is we, we made a motion to increase a variable hour position from .4 to full-time, right?
Correct, Commissioner Campbell, we did, however, that was hired under a variable hour, so I believe we will have to repost it as a full-time permanent position. And that person could certainly apply for that, but I think, based on our bargaining agreement, we would have to post it now as a new full-time permanent position.
But where would there be backfill? I guess that's my question.
Well, it's possible-
If somebody else applied for that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I see.
I'm not sure that that would result, but just in case.
I would entertain a motion to, would it be an amendment, it wouldn't be an amendment, it would be a new motion, wouldn't it? I would entertain a motion that the position we voted on for adjust the variable hour social worker position to full-time in Social Service Department be, include a backfill option on that. If someone wishes to make that motion?
I would so move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Chair, you're getting a real lesson in-
Thank you, I apologize for that.
No problem. Sheriff Emptings, up next. I see your, is Chris out working accidents? Request approval of a memorandum of understanding to be part of newly-formed Cass-Clay Threat Assessment Threat Management Team.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, thanks for having me here this morning. We're looking to join a newly-formed Cass-Clay Threat Assessment Threat Management Team. And what this team would be, it would be comprised of local, state, and federal officers, along with some mental health organizations and things of that nature to identify and investigate people that we feel are maybe an imminent threat to our communities. And in doing so, we would have all of those, all of those team, team members, along with some other folks from the mental health organizations present at these meetings and part of the investigation. So, for example, if we identify somebody in Clay County that we feel is an imminent threat to the safety of our county, this team would be the ones that would investigate it. Right now, it would be maybe one or two detectives from the sheriff's office, but formulating this team, we have some, some state and federal folks on there to where we'll have those assets and resources as well. And I think this is a very good thing for our metro area, our, you know, Fargo, Moorhead, Cass, and Clay County area, to be part of this team. At this time, I'm not requesting for an additional person, I've already identified our street crimes detective as a person that'll be part of this team. What the future will bring with this team, I don't know. I would hope that we don't have a lot of people that we're going to find as being imminent threats that we are busy investigating all the time, but I just, I don't know that. But currently, at this time, I'm not asking for any additional people for this team.
Just, I looked through this when I got the pack. We have been best in law enforcement in this community when we've worked as a unified team. One of the biggest obstructions we've got in our justice system is the fact that although we want it, and we're used to it, we have so many different, dissembled members of different agencies that represent different political units, that sometimes we don't communicate well. And putting a team like this together, we learned at the tragedy in Fargo last year, what happens when there's signs out there, and it's easy to look backwards and have rear-view mirror brilliance in what happened, and say, this guy should have been looked at. But you've got to put your teams together and have them unified, and have them communicating with each other to get that done. And I really admire the thought that went into putting this team together. So, you know, I'm very positive on it, and I appreciate you bringing it to us. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, thank you, Sheriff, I support this. I, you know, I, as we, we see some of these crimes that go on across the country, and whether it's a shooting here, or the issue that, the tragedy that happened last year in Fargo, and, you know, and we ask the public, you know, if you, if you see something, it's important to speak up. And, you know, and I think it's important to speak up, and it's, who do they speak to? You know, so that we can maybe catch some of these things before they do happen. And so, I, you know, and I think that's what you're asking for here, is the ability to, to get a group together that can take some early warning signs and say, how do we, how can we maybe prevent something bad from happening? So, not only is it important for you to do this, but, but, you know, I think the other component of that, that I'm anxious to hear about is, how does somebody who's living in the middle of 10th Street North in Moorhead, and sees maybe something that, how do they report that, so that it can get to this group of people?
Correct, yeah, the first report would go, obviously, to patrol, so they would, they would see something suspicious, maybe something doesn't look right in their neighborhood, so they're going to make that first phone call to dispatch to report some type of suspicious activity.
Of which you always encourage.
Which we always encourage, correct. At that point, then, that patrol, that patrol officer, patrol deputy would bring that report to the attention of investigations. Investigations would get this assigned to the proper person on the team. That person is now responsible for taking that to the team and bringing all the information forward to the team and start looking at that person. So, the team is now kind of focused on this, this activity and this person, and seeing what's there, and seeing if there is a threat, or ruling a threat out as well.
Sure.
Any other observations or questions? Entertain a motion?
I'd move approval.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thanks, Sheriff, and it's a rough day for you, for the troops out there in the, in the blinding snow out in rural part of our county, any advice for us?
Stay home. You're able to stay home, drive slow, yeah, stay home.
David, I have one question, being, we were all at the Capitol last week, and I think you were down there that one day, was there anything eventful from the sheriff's side or that you were all together with, or, and then also a little update, if any, on the SROs?
Yeah, there was a, there was a couple of big things for us. One was the SRO, obviously, we want to get that figured out and get our deputies back in the schools. I was on a meeting yesterday afternoon about 2:00, and we're hoping by about mid-March, we'll have this probably through the House and Senate voted on, and the governor to sign. Once that is signed into law, that is, that'll be in effect immediately, it won't wait till July 1 or August 1. So, that was one of the big things. The other big thing for us is the 48-hour admission to, oh, the Department of Health. So, if you have somebody in your custody, until '20, that's supposed to be actually in the care of the Department of Health, to get them out of our correctional centers as quickly as we can. It is a problem statewide, every sheriff raises their hand when asked if we've had people in our, longer than 48 hours. So, it's definitely a problem and issue statewide that we're hoping we can get correct moving forward. Those are two of our biggest issues that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. All right. Next up is Kathy McKay, I believe. We've got a request to approve emergency preparedness position from .8 to full-time.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Yes, this request is in part because we have some new funding that comes through the Community Health Board. As many of you or most of you are aware, that so much of our funding from Minnesota Department of Health goes through our Community Health Board, and that's those four counties. So, we work together on, on multiple things, and, and we work together on the funding that comes through as well. So, we have a new grant through MDH, in addition to our emergency preparedness funding and our city readiness initiative funding. So, it is a sustainable grant with the additional requirements, and I put the four categories or capabilities in there. And number one, they really want us to increase our workforce capacity with emergency preparedness. Part of that comes, of course, on lessons learned through COVID, and, and how incredibly hectic and stressful, based on having limited staff to kind of carry that through for a couple of years. So, they really want us to be able to increase that capacity for our communities, so they are actually supplying funding for that, which is a good thing. So, the additional things is, you know, just having a sustainability. Now, this position had been full-time in the past, and so much of our public health emergency preparedness funding, we also served with our person to cover Wilkin County. They have such a small county, it's really hard for them to even have a part-time preparedness coordinator. This will allow them to, to be able to do that. So, we covered Wilkin and Becker in the past for many years with our emergency preparedness funding. We also have funding that's called City Readiness Initiative, and there's just, not as many counties in the state, I think there might be 10 of us that work for us, we're working across the river with Fargo Cass. So, we're getting ready, because we, we tend to become one large community with many disasters, City Readiness Initiative is to address the need for, if we would need to provide medication to our entire Cass and Clay counties, we would need to work in coordination with that. So, our person for public health works with those response teams on the Fargo side as well, so we have additional responsibilities. And you can see also, there's a health equity piece with this grant, so the state Minnesota Department of Health is going to provide us with an assessment tool to include those in our community that we need to work with, and then communication, just to enhance our communication. So, all we are requesting is a .2 at this time, to move our emergency preparedness person to full-time. We have 100, almost 200,000 through 2027. So, the funding, as we have heard, is going to be ongoing. Again, you know, we'll see in 2027 if they continue this funding. They're working hard, our lobbyists are working really hard at increasing funding for public health- Our lobbyists are working really hard at increasing funding for public health because we are really, we're really stretched to have full capacity and full workforce with the funding that's, goes back 15 years with no increase through the legislators. So, this will be very helpful in addressing our preparedness needs for our community and to addressing those additional tasks that are required through that grant. Our four county public health directors got together yesterday, and we talked about the funding and our needs. So, everyone, so Clay, Wilken, Otter Tail, Becker is anticipating increasing their emergency preparedness response individuals or individual. We'll still have additional money, so we're, we're talking about other things. It has to be part of a response. So, in other words, if we need to have a support staff to help all the four counties, we may come back depending on who's going to house that support staff person. So, this is just initially to increase the emergency preparedness person that we have.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I, in regards to the funding, does it have to be spent on this one particular item or could the funds go to bolster what the person that's already in this capacity can do?
Yes, thanks, Commissioner Mojo and Mr. Chair. The funding, we can either increase the FTEs of current people in the position or we can hire. If there's counties that truly don't have a designated preparedness coordinator, they would hire. Because we have a Point 8, we would just move it to full-time.
My, my follow-up question to that is, you know, I really struggle with the visibility of the work being done with this particular, in this particular position and understanding that it's part of a four-county component. Does it make more sense to have a siloed person doing it or have support staff to add to what's going on?
Yeah, Commissioner Mojo, what they're really, because this person is going to be trained in all the other 15 capabilities, so it's in addition to that. So, to have an additional person for our county at this time wouldn't be very effective adding, adding the Point 2 to have the additional time. A lot of the work that we have to go through with this new grant is, we have probably 25, I'm just taking a stab at that, MOUs with various organizations in our community. For instance, we are working with, our person is leading the long-term care and assisted living preparedness. We had, if those of you remember during the flood, when we had to evacuate nursing homes, we had quite, it was pretty chaotic. And our nurses were assisting the fire department and then traveling on buses to bring folks to another nursing home. So, just that example for our person, and my person is leading that team, so it's FM ambulance, our emergency manager is there, and all the long-term care and assisted living. That's just one group that we're working with to beef up their response and ability to, for instance, how are we going to evacuate the number of clients you have in your nursing home and make sure they have all their meds and, and all of their equipment and what kind of transportation do we need? That's the organization that this person would help provide. We're working with higher ed to make sure that they have, we have to continually monitor their response and all hazards plans as well as K-12 schools and other community organizations. We also work with our healthcare organizations, so Sanford and Ascensia, so we meet with them regularly. They have their internal preparedness people and we meet with them in regards to the community. So, there's a lot of committee meetings that they'll have out in the community moving forward. And it really pays to have the person that's doing all of it to do that extra.
And just listening to that, you know, remember back to the '07 flood, '09, '09. Getting the nursing homes cleared, dealing with the school situations and the campus situations, all that, we were not, we did a good job of putting things together on the fly. We were not prepared. So, if we can centralize that with one employee who has that knowledge and then retain them, that's not a bad idea. Any other, yes, Frank?
When we hired this person, why did we hire him at a Point 8 and not Point 1?
Well, part of, part of that was, as we were in the past, working with Becker and Wilken, their funding assisted supporting this position. And, and that person was spread out doing those two counties. We currently, following COVID, you know, realizing that we all have our really extended work in our communities, so this comes in a very timely manner. So, Wilken can have their dedicated person. They won't have a full-time person, their county is too small, but they'll may have, may have a half-time person. And Becker as well will be asking their board for a person. So, this, this, our individual will not have to cover those two counties anymore. That'll be helpful.
And Otter Tail already has a full one?
Otter Tail already has, yes, their person. I think they have maybe an extra half person, but they're covered for their county. And, and Mr. Chair, when you were mentioning the, the nursing home evacuation, we also had the, the high-rise evacuation. And that's when we took boats in there to get people out of there. So, you know, we hope to never have that again. We also hope never to have a pandemic, but we have to be ready.
Any other questions?
Kathy, how does this coincide with the work that Gabe does in the Sheriff's Department?
Ours is completely separate. This is public health emergency preparedness, so for the safety of, of all the citizens. Now, we work with our emergency manager. For instance, the meeting that we are hosting with the long-term care and assisted living, we invite the emergency manager, our emergency manager and the city emergency, emergency manager. So, they are present there as well to work with that group. So, there's many groups that they will be a part of our work and we will be a part of theirs as a supporting. Public health has to be the supporting agency. For the flood, we were a supporting agency to, to the county.
To the county, yeah. I would, you know, just in the sense of evacuations, when I think back to the times of 1997 and 2009, those two major floods, like, you know, there were an awful lot of evacuations done, but I, I think those evacuations were primarily led by law enforcement, weren't they? With the exception of maybe hospital care type of settings were?
And the fire department was very, fire department was primarily.
Part of that, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, we'll work and there, there's already work going on with the emergency manager.
Even, even with that, we had sort of a bifurcated, for a time being, command structure and the fire department that confused everybody. We just weren't prepared. And pre-planning has taken place since then, and this is part of it, I think.
Correct.
That would, would justify. Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, thank you. So, we just came out of an enormous pandemic. I hate to traumatize you with that statement, but I'm, I'm going to be frank here and say that I don't support this. And here's where it's probably an unpopular opinion. Having just come out of that enormous pandemic, the lack of work that we did with this position was troubling to me. Understanding that we're all drawn in a million different ways, but I struggle with seeing if we didn't really work with that individual during an enormous pandemic, I struggled justifying and increasing the workload that that person's doing now. And I'm, you know, I, I know it probably doesn't make any sense and I understand the evacuations. I was at the high-rise evacuating my grandparents, too. And so, I, I understand there's a lot of preparedness and coordination, but, you know, I think I've only seen that the person that works in this capacity in the nine years that I've been on this county board, three times to the county board meeting. And I just struggle with increasing that workload if, if we're not seeing the work per se. I appreciate that there's funds available and particularly funds available until 2027. And, and maybe in that time, it's identified that there is more work and that those funds can be used to bolster what this position is. But I, I personally don't, given the information that I have because of the past and today's support, what an increase would be.
Mr. Chair, just, and Commissioner Mojo, the, the person is considered the planner for a pandemic. I was considered incident command. So, I would certainly be at the forefront. But the planners behind the scenes doing all the planning and keeping everything organized and working, working as, as much as I did as the incident command.
And I completely appreciate that. And I can't diminish how much work your department did during that time. However, Commissioner Campbell and I were on committees that met weekly with how we were going to mitigate what we were seeing in the community, and we didn't, didn't work with that person at all. And that, those funds, we really use to plan forward how we as a community are dealing with a public health crisis.
So, tell me the other, this person who I've never met, so, I mean, not like I know everybody in your department, but do they also assist in other public health works other than the preparedness?
Yeah, emergency preparedness. They, that's.
That's their full, that's their scope.
Yeah, that's full-time. Plus, they do all the training. So, our National Incident Management System training, which, Mr. Chair, you're fully aware of with law enforcement and fire, we have to continue to keep everyone trained. So, I have 98 staff. They have to continually be trained in the four different NIMS trainings.
And do you, do you feel this person and their duties right now are stressed out at Point 8?
Oh, for sure. But he's new, so you're going to be stressed out anyway, learning all of the details, but yeah.
Say that one more time.
Yeah, he's, you know, he's new. He's, he's still within the six-month probationary period. So, yeah, definitely has a full load to manage.
The person that Commissioner Mojo is talking about no longer exists?
Correct. That person no longer works here.
Any further?
What was, what was PICs? Did this go to PIC?
We sent it forward, yes.
Pardon me?
We sent it forward. We sent, we've sent it forward to the full board.
With a recommendation or no recommendation?
I don't think there was recommendation made.
Chair, I'm going to make a motion to deny the request.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Anything additional? Any other motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the increase for the coordinator position to Point 8, Point 2, full-time. My opinion is the, I do think that we need to have a person in this possession, in this position, hearing it's a newer person, if that gives that person more latitude to work and create a greater preparedness. I think it's just important we got the funding to go with it. And I don't, I, I think it would be wrong to do anything less. We never know what the next emergency, we talk about flood. I think, personally, I think as time goes on, we're going to have flood protection. I think it's going to be more in the way of, of disease. And I don't want to get caught on the wrong side of that. So, I would support that with a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have motion and a second. Just an observation on this. I understand Commissioner Mojo's point of view on this, and we did not see much of the prior emergency services, preparedness individual. It would not be a bad idea looking down the road. And I understand part of what the new employee's position is going to be is getting trained and getting their feet on the ground. But within a year, I think there needs to be an effort to bring them before the committee or before the commission and let us see what they're doing and, and present that to us to address some of the concerns that have been expressed. Just my observation on it. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I, I guess, you know, just, I, I'm having a hard time voting either way on, on this. And it, you know, I, I, in the past, when it comes to these issues, I've, I have relied on recommendations of PIC. I did not hear one coming out. I hear some concerns from this side. And I guess, having known this, I, you know, we have a, we have a county administrator that oversees all issues in, in regards to this. And I, I would have maybe liked to have an opportunity to bend his ear a little bit on, on this as well. He's, that's, you know, he's the, he's the leader of all of this and he's in charge of all of this, oversees all of it. And maybe through human resources, too, with Darren, I, I haven't, you know, as being part of PIC, I haven't, I didn't have, have the opportunity to maybe to see, did they have, did you guys have some thoughts or opinions on this or, or thinking outside the box? Are there other ways to, to, should we be looking at? I, I haven't heard any of that. And, you know, so I'm, I'm, I sense that there's support for this, but at this point in time, just based on the lack of information from my standpoint, I'm going to vote against the motion. For, for now.
Ms. Larson, do you have anything you, you want to bring up?
I, I think, you know, one of the things that this board felt in, in the reasoning, just to kind of refresh her, and the reason why it went from a Point 1 to a Point 8 were some of the things that Commissioner Mojo shared. I think that as we sat through PIC, one of the items that, why there was not a recommendation that came forward, as Kathy mentioned of there's, there's additional responsibilities of the emergency preparedness position, one of the things we asked what those were. And I don't know that at that time, the PIC felt she was able to articulate what those, what those new additions were. I think the other, the other concern is, is that if we are covering as a commission or as, excuse me, as a county, we're covering both Becker County and Wilken County, which now under this policy are under these funding opportunities, they'll be covered by their own person. That would actually be less, less duties for this position. And so, I think from, from the standpoint of at least my position on the PIC, there was an information that was brought forward that showed exactly what the additional responsibilities would warrant moving from Point 8 to at 1 FTE. And then actually, the responsibilities would be lowered if they're not covering two different counties.
So, you're saying they, there would actually be more time available because they're not having to make those plans within those other counties? Is that?
That would be, that would make sense to me, yes.
And Mr. Chair, the additional duties are described and they're in the board action. The state gave us, you know, the overview and some additional duties that are required. So, I'd listed those four there. So, we did receive that, which we didn't have in PIC. So, but, so those, based on those additional duties, there's, I mean, it's, it's summarized from a, quite a large lengthy contract. So, there is quite a bit of additional responsibilities that would require us. We have a large county. We have a large population, and I think our, our population deserves the ability for public health to respond. When Commissioner Krabhanoff mentioned infectious disease, that's certainly a concern for us. And we know that there will be other infectious diseases that come up that we'll have to respond to. And so, as you recall, during our COVID, we hired a ton of people to help us with not only public information, but vaccinations and, and all the data and research that we needed to do. We were doing that every week to keep up with everything that was going on. So, there was a huge amount of support that we didn't have in our infrastructure. As it was, our, my infrastructure was working night and day, so.
If not, I think we need a roll call on this.
Commissioner Mojo?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Commissioner Ebinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
Yes.
Commissioner Krabhanoff?
Okay, motion passes. One of the healthy things about a body of elected officials is that we represent different perspectives and within our community. And I think, Kathy, you and your organization did a wonderful job during the pandemic. But I think this position has been a concern at times. And I would encourage you to move into it, to engage this employee, and to bring back, you've heard the concerns expressed, bring back a presentation in an appropriate time to give this person a chance to get on the ground about what they're going to do and what they're doing and what they see their job as. That does not detract from the excellent work that's been done by our health, public health department. But this, today was a support. The commission passed it. And, you know, I take that as a good thing. Mr. Campbell?
And Mr. Chair, I, you know, again, my, my vote wasn't against Kathy and what's going on in this individual. My vote was because I just didn't feel there was enough information provided to me to make a decision. And it even reflects more so after I did hear our county administrator's response. And it's as simple as that. I don't, nobody should feel bad about it. I think it's, everybody's got the right idea in mind of what should be done. Certainly, Kathy, I gave you high praises during the pandemic stuff, and you did excellent work, as Commissioner Ebinger said. And I'll stand by that 100%. But we'll move on.
Thank you, Kathy. Let's take a five-minute break.
Yeah, thanks, Rob.
Back in session. And next up is James O'Donnell, Director of West Central Regional Juvenile Center. And he is going to present his annual department update. James?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Yes, I'm here today to do our annual update, go through how things are going, what happened in 2023, what we're looking forward to in 2024, and answer any questions that you might have. First, okay, yeah. The first bit I'd like to talk, you know, we got our mission statement, but a lot of people don't understand what juvenile centers are for. We have secure, non-secure options, but there's always a stigma about the youth that end up in our facility. And it's not, it shouldn't be that way because we have, we have people that, youth that dad's parents are M.D.s, police officers, social workers. I mean, we got the whole gamut. So, it isn't, it isn't, you know, a certain type of people. It's everybody. It could be anybody's kid. And so, it's critical that that's understood. But it is less than 1% of the population too, of the youth population. But it's a critical point. But for secure, provide secure services for youth that need out of home placement, that have committed a delinquency offense, that would have, they would have been placed in jail if they were an adult. And we do a whole slew of different things in that secure program, and I'll get into that a little bit later. And then, we have our non-secure program. Our non-secure program is for delinquent and non-delinquent youth. And that has changed quite a bit over the past year, and hopefully, we're able to change it back to what it was intended to. If the PRTF and stuff that social services is going through, if that, that might be very beneficial to us and get youth to where they need to be. So, I'll just start out talking about a little bit of partners a little bit. We have Morehead Public Schools. That's probably our biggest one. It is our biggest one. They're absolutely amazing. They do, they do very well by us. It's, all the youth that come here, will be attending Morehead Public Schools. But it's important to note too, that, that the funding that it's coming for, Morehead's not paying for youth that are coming from Alexandria. Alexandria School District is paying Morehead. And then, just like if they're coming from Jamestown, it's the same thing. So, but they're able to coordinate all that. And that's, that's a huge, huge undertaking. And then, a huge thing is a lot of our youth are on IEPs. And IEPs are very difficult, very time-consuming, very intensive, and they're able to keep up on them. And it's absolutely amazing.
Just for the public IEP?
Individual education plan. So, then, then after that, we have Lutheran Social Services. Steph Rosley, who's been leading that thing with us for a long time, she's absolutely amazing. We have probably about five therapists that are there every day. They're during the day, they're there during the evening. They come, you know, random times. They do a whole slew of different things, and I'll talk about some of them in a little bit. Lakeland's a big partner of ours. They run our eval program in our non-secure unit, and they provide some psychiatric services. Solutions is a new partner with us, and we're very happy that Joel with Solutions was able to pick up our chemical dependency. We lost chemical dependency therapists and counselors, and we were having very great difficulty. And it is difficult finding them. But Solutions stretched out and assisted us there. We have Psychologics, which is Dr. Keeland, who does the sex offending program, and she does individual stuff with them. Oasis, that's primarily Dr. Lavalha. And that's, that's critical. I can't, I can't really stress how important, because adolescent psychiatry is in such need that, like, with her skills, she could literally set an office schedule Monday through Thursday, work manually, and make a killing. But she's willing to come into the juvenile center on evenings, whenever. She'll answer some of our phone calls. It's absolutely amazing because these are the type of medications that are, that are more heavy hitter in their mental health medications, ones that take the specialist prescribed. And then, we have some significant volunteers. And what I mean by that is, these are volunteers that are with us consistently, and we run backgrounds on them and everything like that. So, it's Concordia, they do our mindfulness group, and they've been at that. And then, Red River Youth for Christ has been with us for about 20-some years. So. Staffing, just kind of go through our staffing. I'll put the one statistic there on the right. You know, it's not anything that we're proud of, but we're proud that it's going down. I mean, you look at turnover, and that kind of is an indication for leadership. And I hope that that's not the issue. But anyways, we're showing improvement. And if you look turnover, it's just turnover. It's just killing us. But in 2023, was our lowest turnover. So, that was pretty good. But if you still look at the numbers, it's still about 25%. 25% of our full-time staff turned over last year. And it's, it's a difficult job. Lots of, lots of issues, lots of complex issues. There's no playbook that they can go by. There's, there's, everything, things thrown at them. And now, with hospitals, PRTFs not taking some of these youth, it's falling on our staff who don't have the doctor's level, the master's level. And our staff are the ones that are dealing with it, and our staff are doing a really good job. And we have some staff, that's why I talk about some of the overtime necessity. And that's, we get such a unique case. We get kids that are highly suicidal that the hospital won't take. No hospital, and the region will take. But they're highly suicidal, and they really need to be in a hospital. And that takes special staff that can work with them and/or do something. And at times, it might be stay there until 2:00 in the morning until they're sound asleep. And so, we got all that. So, we got 26 in our secure unit, about 50 variable hours. That fluctuates a little bit. That's part-time staff, mostly college youth. And then, 15 in our non-secure unit. And then, there's four of us in the admin office. We have two primary units, a secure and non-secure, like I mentioned. But there's universal programs in all of them. It's K through 12, public schools, Morehead Public Schools. So, if a kid graduates, the kids graduate with us, they graduate with a Morehead Public Schools diploma. They're able to help us out with GED stuff as well. We run our program based on cognitive behavioral approach. So, there's different, our longer-term, we'll use T4C and decision points for our short term. And we're getting into a little bit of anger replacement training. There's individual group counseling, religious services, chemical dependency, trauma therapy, that's with LSS, and they can do really complex and different things too. They can do individual stuff sometimes that the original trauma therapy, which would be cognitive behavioral side of things, don't work. And one thing that they actually got trained in, they upped it, and a couple of the therapists went and got trained and become certified to do EMDR, which is, which is very nice, and that helps primarily, it's been shown more effective in, with males sometimes, and sometimes veterans and stuff like that. For older ones that are working through trauma therapy, they find EMDR is more effective than cognitive types of thing. But that's neither here nor there. But evaluations primarily in our non-secure unit. We can do them in our secure unit, but primarily want to do them in our non-secure unit. Sex offender treatment, medication management, transitional services, and mindfulness. We're not talking about our non-secure here. Our non-secure, we average about 17 youth in the non-secure. About 40 to 50% come from non-Clay County, and they pay a per diem. And we always have room for Clay County. And I put, you know, it's designed for a population of youth transitioning from secure or awaiting a new community placement, emergency hold for social services, emergency hold for law enforcement, and evaluation. What's happened is, in the last couple of years, everything's dropped out treatment-wise across the state. And, you know, it, Clay County does an excellent job at taking care of Clay County residents because there's other counties that are calling, trying to, trying to get in there. And we're full, but, I mean, there's a need when they can't get into a hospital or something, and PRTF, and you need a safe place for a youth. That's, that's becomes very stressful for their social services department, their sheriff's departments. So, we've done a lot of adapting in the last two years, probably three years now. And then, our CLIPS program, and that's our transition program. That's licensed underneath our non-secure. This is kind of a vision of this board and previous administration, before the expansion, as part of the expansion. We got the program up and going in 2020, when we finally got into that area. We were able to capture some grant funding. We captured it for the third time, and we're through 2025. So, we would have been able to capture about $750,000. And that helps tremendously. It provides the services that, you know, you can get right, right down there and work. It's a male program. It's for males, seven to eight youth on average. It works best when they're transitioning from secure. And these are youth that are, are delinquent youth that have been through a secure residential program. And they've gone home two or three different times, and they just realized that home isn't, isn't the right fit for them, and that they're just going to transition to living on their own. And we'll work with them. I mean, we get youth, they have jobs in the community. And they eventually get themselves a stable place to live, an independent place to live. And they move out, and they move out with a job, health insurance, all that, all that stuff lined up for them. And that's, it's been very successful. And there's, again, an always waiting list for that, but not for Clay. Clay has it. Then we have our secure program. That operates underneath a cooperative service agreement, but ultimate authority lies with this board. But the cooperative service agreement, there's 11 member counties. I just, I'll talk about those ones next, but it looks like I put these ones on the slide. Detention. So, there's two different programs in the secure program. It's detention, and that's for pre-adjudicated youth. That's like pending a delinquency or criminal charge. And they are placed by law enforcement. They're the detention authority up until 36 hours. And then, after 36 hours, then the courts are the detention authority. There's about 20 youth. This is the longer term. These are the kids that are doing an independent programming. That's, they can have whatever therapist that they need, whatever medication they need, whatever it is. And then, and then, we intensively program them. We hold them accountable, and we help them grow. It's very popular around the state. There's, there's always a waiting list backed up months for that. So, and I'll explain a little bit how we utilize, helps us with that, with our funding and our structure too. But these are our member counties. Again, in about 2023, this is about roughly 60% of it was our members, and about 40% of it was non-members. And you can see, there's 35 different counties used us in Minnesota and North Dakota last year. To show you some issues that are happening, we had, Winona Sheriff's Office was looking to place a youth in detention. They've tried all over. And this is one that I've used this example before. But where they were at, they were closer to Chicago than they were to Morehead. And that's, they were looking for a bed. So, that's, that's absolutely amazing that there's that lack of services in the state. But that's where we're at. So, then, we look at the secure data, like population, members and non-members. So, what we do is, we find that we can effectively operate at about 42 youth in our secure program. That's where we're effective. So, we balance that with the needs of our members. And when our membership needs go down, we're able to take some non-members to offset it. So, our staff are at that constant high level of where they need to be, and on their toes. And that's where we're at. Secure data, we had 494 intakes, but some of them were duplicated. I mean, the same person got booked in more than once a year. Median stay is about five days. Average stays 21 days. So, as you can see, statistics can really mislead people when you say an average because, you know, 38% of the youth are out within 48 hours. So, that's just where it's at. Secure data, secure is mostly used for youth that can't be placed somewhere else in the community. There's no other alternatives. And most of that has to do with violence and aggression. 65% of them are primarily there for assaults and robbery, which would be a personal thing where you're physically taking something from somebody. Burglary is only 4%. Crim sex, 4%. Then, we have disorderly conduct, obstruction of justice, terrorist threats. That's, you know, 25.5%. And those are the ones that, if it's first, second time, they're the ones that are out within 36 hours. It just might be a wake-up call for them. And drugs and DUI is only 1%. So, there's, there's, there's programs out there for, for youth that are not aggressive. That's basically what it's at. Secure data, again, we're licensed from, from 10 years old all the way up to 19 years old. Anytime they're under 12, we make them contact county attorney's office and let them know that this is, this is something. And, and yeah, and usually it is because the kid ends up going to youth. And it's a sad situation, but there's no other place for that youth. And at 12 years old, it's tough. We'll try to get them into our non-secure. We'll try to do whatever we can. But again, luckily, that's a small minority. But that is a problem. There is a piece of legislation out right now that is going to make it, that the proposal is 13, can't be less than 13, which, from my standpoint, I like it. I think that'd be great. But the problem is, there's no for these youth to go. So, they can't, hopefully, they don't pass the legislation without having a plan in place. So, then, you can see the age breakdown as it goes through. Most of our youth are between 15 and 17 years old. Secure data, we're roughly about 2/3rd male, 1/3rd female. And the change has been trending. Historically, for up until about two years ago, maybe Historically, for up until about two years ago, maybe three years ago now, it's always thirteen to fourteen percent females, always thirteen, fourteen percent females. Now, last year, there's times in our facility where we're over fifty percent of our secure population's female. So it bounces around quite a bit, and that's a huge change that's happening that we're seeing and noticing. I always got to touch on this out-home placement thing, because, again, one size doesn't fit all for everybody. And is out-home placement good or bad? For the majority of the time, it's not the best option. Try to keep the kids in the home, but there is a small minority of youth out there, that one percent, that it's actually a savings for them. It takes away trauma that they're dealing with at home or in the community. So I like to put this out there as, you know, as that piece for some of the youth. You can't, there's no, you can't generalize hardly any of our youth. They're all very, very different. It's absolutely amazing when you start to get to know them a little bit, and they're different. Nobody's the same. They all have their challenges. We all have our challenges. So last slide is just kind of talking about some of the challenges that I see and I feel. Again, it's mental health placements, only accepting non-aggressive youth. There's a stigma, misunderstanding around what juvenile detention is. There's a lot of people that are claiming to be juvenile justice experts that are the farthest thing from it, and the problem is, they get the ears of some legislators sometimes, and it really causes problems, and then misuse of data that skews things. I mean, it's a sad state of affairs. One common one is, youth that are placed out of home, youth that are placed in detention have higher rates of not graduating high school. And they use that to equate that it's juvenile detention. If they weren't placed in juvenile detention, they'd graduate from high school, but that'd be the same logic as saying, you know, a person that sees a cardiologist has a higher chance of dying of a heart attack versus a person that doesn't see a cardiologist. So, I mean, but it's just, it's just data. And the way that people see things, 2023, there's still pushdown. Ninety percent of our youth are on mental health meds. So that includes even your Prozac-type of medications, antidepressants, but some of them are on some real heavy hitters. And then the biggest challenge I see that I would like is the 245D licensing, and I think that's what's backing up in our non-secure unit, is some of these youth should be in these homes, but these homes that are designed for them can't take them because licensing requirements don't allow them to provide a parental guidance like a normal parent would. There's a lot of, the licensing requires them to have a lot of independence, and as you know, youth don't make the best decisions for themselves. So that's the problem with that. That is all I have. Got any questions?
James, you mentioned your sweet spot in secure is right in that low-forties number. What are, what do you license for in secure, and how many additional beds do you have that are currently not licensed?
We're licensed for fifty-five, and then we have, well, ten more that aren't licensed that we have, so we got the space. So I think that was the intent of this board, the advisory board, was for that to last us for twenty years solid, take care of the county's needs, all the county's needs for twenty years. And until that time, we were going to utilize some revenue from non-member services. So we are utilizing taxpayers' money correctly, and we're not just sitting over there doing nothing.
Did we ever have to turn down a member?
Not since we expanded, no.
Just one, thanks, James. Back in your early part of your presentation regarding non-secure, there were basically four different areas where placement would occur. A big one, of course, is social services, and you mentioned law enforcement. At what, at what point does law enforcement put somebody into non-secure versus secure?
It would be, Commissioner, it would be something very minor, and/or it's something that they maybe had contact with law enforcement, and the law enforcement would like to turn them over to their parents and release them to their parents, but they can't find the parents. And so they would, we would provide a safe spot for them, and law enforcement would be able to have, give us the ability then, hey, when so-and-so shows up, it can be released. I just want to talk to them, you know? That's where law enforcement, the ones, come in.
A significant number of the ones that are in non-secure, though, are at no fault of their own, right? I mean, they're
A majority of them, yeah.
They're probably there because of their family setting is not
Family setting and their mental health issues, that they're not safe at home. So that's
Just an observation. We, you know, I've worked in this community for twelve years as police chief, and I'm embarrassed to say, when I got elected as commissioner, it was the first time I went over to the, to your facility, and you gave me a tour, and I had no idea. I mean, we were putting kids in there, and I'd heard that it was great. Sheriff Laney, when he got Cass County involved in things, told me, you've got the best juvenile facility I've ever seen. These kids are getting educated, and he wanted the kids that were in his detention to get placed over here for their well-being, not for convenience. But that tour opened my eyes. We have kids that are in their most vulnerable, dangerous positions in their life, where a change can take place, and they come to your facility, and they get mental health treatment, they get an education, they get guidance, they get stability. I'm really impressed. I'm proud to be a little part of it. Every time we go to AMC functions, I hear people going, God, I wish we had West Central. Well, I wish we had something like that. I hear about that and about our jail. We can be real proud of the fact that, as you put it, we take care of the citizens of Clay County. We take care of the citizens of a lot of this state and a lot of North Dakota, and we provide them with something they need when they need it the most. And I recall on your exit interviews, and correct me on this if I'm off, you've had a number of kids, a predominant number of kids, who feel safer and happier in your facility than they do at home.
That's very correct.
You're doing something right over there, and I hope future, I know this commission is behind you. I hope it remains that way, and you continue to thrive. Yeah, Commissioner Kravonoff.
Yeah, I just want to echo the same response that Commissioner Everidge just said. Having the first tour, as I became a commissioner, totally moved in what I saw as I went through there, watching the educators work with the kids, and to the point of behavioral health, where they just need that, because whether it's to themselves or at their home, what else do we do? And yet, that piece of having treatment, and most importantly, along with that, education at the same time, to, you know, just develop children as they should be developed. I do have a question. This might be a little naive on my part, but tell me how or if, does the forty-eight-hour rule apply to anything in juvie?
So in secure, it's a thirty-six hours.
Oh, that's the thirty-six you're talking about.
And then for a non-secure emergency placement, it can be seventy-two hours.
Okay. What happens, though? What happens at the end of that time if there's no place to go?
If there's no place to go? That's usually, the problem is, that's when the courts can't find a place for them to go, another safe place for them to go. That's why they might be left to say, you might have to stay another week until we can find some place for you, or a non-secure option, if that's available.
And I'm just curious, just in a general way, does that happen often, or, I mean, is it kind of one-off, or?
It does. Everything's, you know, every situation's different. It could be one that they can't find the parents. It could be that the parents themselves might be in our jail. It could be a whole number of different things, but the totality of the situation that the judge looks at deems that it's best that stay in detention for the time being.
Very good. Yeah. Well, thank you, James.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, James. Thank you for the work you do in for the presentation.
Thank you for the support.
Next up, we've got Corey Bang, our solid waste manager. He's got a couple items for us. Corey, first is your annual department update.
Thank you for having me. As you know, the solid waste department is split up into two separate locations, the Resource Recovery Center and the landfill. The Resource Recovery Center is divided into a few different areas, the household hazardous waste, public drop-off, education, recycling, and trucking. How do I move this slide, Sarah? Okay, thank you. In 2023, the household hazardous waste department processed fifty-four point seven tons of material from one thousand eight hundred and forty-seven households. The department was able to distribute three thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight pounds of usable product to five hundred and fourteen different individuals through our reuse room. So that's been a huge asset to the county. And this does not include any furniture or non-hazardous items that are given out through our reuse room. We have people that are in there weekly, if not daily, some people, finding stuff that they can refurbish or reuse at their house, so. The RSC sees an average of fifty private customers per day through our public drop-off. This totals approximately eleven thousand customers for the first year. We have continued to look at better ways to streamline the flow of our customers as well as staff. This constant adjustment ensures that we are processing material efficiently as possible. Once again, most of the RSC staff has been cross-trained to cover for other positions within the RSC, as well as working at the landfill as needed. Recycling at the RSC has been received very well by the public. They are very thankful to have all the services we offer in one location. They don't have to bring their electronics up north. They don't have to bring their household down, has highway tan. They can just stop at one stop with everything. In 2023, we processed one thousand six hundred and six point eight tons of household recyclables, and that was sorted. The co-mingled, we processed two thousand one hundred and seventy point eight tons, seven hundred and sixty-two freon appliances, seven hundred and sixty-seven non-freon appliances, seven hundred and forty-nine mattresses, which we are currently looking at possible recycling through Becker County. Once we get the details of that, we will bring it to the board. We processed three thousand two hundred and twenty-five tires. Three hundred and thirty-seven of those tires had rims on them, and one hundred and sixty tons of metal through both of our locations. Also at the landfill and the RSC, we processed two hundred and thirty-two point four tons of electronics and bulbs, and nine hundred and forty-five pounds of batteries and cellphones. Our trucking department is now being dispatched out of the RSC. The trucks are still stored at the landfill, but loads from both Clay and Becker County are coordinated out of the RSC. This is just easier because myself, Ashley, and the truck drivers are all there, as well as the city of Morehead. It just makes it easier for communication. The trucking department has had two full-time drivers on staff for the last year. They both have worked extremely hard to correct the shortage that Clay County has faced at the end of 2022. We were short about, or over sixteen hundred tons at that point, and as you know, the shorted amount still comes out of our budget. At the end of January of this year, we were down to eighty-seven tons, and I believe by the end of February, we should be real close to zero, within a load or two of zero. So they have caught all that up within one year's timeframe, so I appreciate the work they've done. We currently have four semi-tractors, four garbage trailers, and one tanker for leachate. Total RSC staff consists of one household hazardous waste person, one educational and recycling coordinator, one scale house attendant, one drive-through attendant, two truck drivers, two roster employees that come in in time of need, an office manager, and myself. The landfill is in the process of replacing its manager. Brett has decided to leave the county after seven years with us. He has been offered a position in Florida, and he will be missed. I would like to publicly thank him for his hard work and wish him well in his new adventure. He will be done as of the fifth of March, so he's leaving shortly.
On a day like today, I don't know why anyone would want to go to Florida.
We can't complain this winter. We'll take the one day.
But we will miss Brett.
He's on vacation now. He's in Arizona, too, so it doesn't, or he's in Vegas, I think, right now.
He's done a great job.
In the last year, the landfill has taken delivery of the new loader, and it could not have come at a better time. As the old one broke down the morning, the new one was set for delivery, so we were able just to park it and start using the new one until they could pick up the old one. We also have ordered the new CAT compactor, and it will be delivered early fall of 2024. The staff and I would like to thank you for your approval of these items, that they were greatly needed and appreciated. Over the last year, the department has worked extremely hard on cost-saving measures, as well as cross-training most of, not all of, our employees. Some of the programs that are currently up and running are as follows. Our leachate delivery to Pelican Rapids, we have delivered one million three hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred gallons to date, which has yielded savings to the county of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. We have signed a one-year contract, and we'll look to renew this contract annually going forward. The only stipulation with renewing it forward would be PFOS regulations, and we won't know those till they come out. So that'll be like an annual review going forward. Both Pelican and us are very happy with the program.
What does Pelican do with the leachate?
They run it through their water treatment plant. They put in a big water treatment facility that they have lots of capacity for, and they didn't, they weren't using it all, so they were looking for an outlet to use the capacity. So it's a revenue stream for them, as well as a source for us to get rid of it. The Becker County load sharing has been up and running for three months now. It has been a challenge on the logistics side, but it's providing to be a good plan. In the first month, Becker County hauled twelve loads for us, and we hauled nine loads for them. It was a savings to the county, of Clay County, for about six thousand dollars. The logistics of this program are a little tough because Becker County's garbage goes up and down, and they can't store their garbage like we can. Every time they come over and look, they envy our facility, because when they call for load, I can have one for them. It's not an issue. That'll get better as the summer goes on, because they get a little busier in the summer, so. Our onsite freon removal has started late last summer and has had a significant positive impact to our budget. We no longer need to have these items hauled away to be processed, and this allows us to retain the reimbursement from the scrap metal we create. Prior to freezing up, we had processed nearly two hundred units of freon appliances. Outsourcing this would have cost the county nine thousand dollars, as well forfeiting the scrap metal reimbursement. As soon as the weather warms up, we will resume the process with the nearly hundred units we're storing right now. When you remove freon, it has to be above forty degrees, so we're storing them anywhere we can right now, and once it warms up, we will get after it and get them all taken care of and processed, so. We are currently continuing to expand our public education campaign, trying to educate the public on our department, as well as safety. With the help of the GIS department, we have created two videos. The first explains the Resource Recovery Center and how it works from entry to the gate to the exit. The second is a garbage door-to-dump video that tracks household garbage actually from your curb to either the perm or the landfill, and both those are available online. We are now developing a program around battery disposal. We have had two fires in the last month at the transfer station, and both were proven to be caused by improper battery disposal. We will emphasize the proper disposal of batteries to every group we speak to, as well as each customer that we serve. If you look at the slide here, this is the actual battery of the last fire we had. Sean, the loader operator, the operator inside the actual transfer station, was able to see smoke, identified this battery pack, and actually grabbed it with the material handler and picked it out. We have a video, if you want to see it sometime. It blew up into a fireball about the size of a basketball. When these batteries go off, they don't, there's no way to put them out. Essentially, you have to let them burn out, so we just isolated off the side and let them burn down. I went to pick the battery up about forty-five minutes later, it was still hot. So you can see where this would be an issue if it was in the garbage. So public education on how to dispose of these properly is very, is very important. Anytime they're punctured, or there's, as you can see, this one got bent in the loading process, so once the air gets into the battery, it actually ignites it. So it's a chemical reaction. In closing, my staff would like to thank the board for their support and all the changes we have In closing, my staff would like to thank the board for their support and all the changes we have implemented and the equipment we need to make these changes happen. We try to be as efficient as possible, and without your support, we could not accomplish what we have done and what we want to do. So thank you very much. And with that, I will yield for questions.
Questions?
Great job.
Ever did well.
Thank you for the presentation, Corey. And now, you're up again. You've already alluded to our landfill manager position. Let you elaborate on it.
Right. So Brett has taken a position with the county in Florida. He will be on the enforcement side. So rather than having to deal with the MPCA like he does now, he will be the MPCA. So he, it's a little different position. He's working for the county, but it'll be enforcing a waste management landfill, so. With his leaving, we will need a landfill manager, so I'm here today to request that we can start advertising for that position and replace it with potentially backfill.
Move approval with backfill.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. There you go, Corey.
Thank you.
And give our thanks to... Yep, let him know we appreciate his time here, and he can enjoy Florida. Okay, next up, we have, is it around?
Mr. Chair, I can handle, I can take this if it's all right.
Okay, Steve, it's going to be a request approval to reappoint Tim Brendan...
Brendan Mule.
Brendan Mule to a second term on the Board of Adjustment.
You hit it right in the spot, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brendan Mule has been part of our committees. This will be his second term, but he's also spent three terms on our planning commission. He's been a great asset to both the committees, but currently the Board of Adjustments. And so we would make the recommendation that he be reappointed.
Move to reappoint him.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Darren, your next request approval to change leave donation policy.
I had a joke for you, but I know we're running late, so. You can always hold off on the joke if you want me to. So I'll tell the joke. Because I know you all want this joke.
Yes.
So there was these two old HR directors, and they were going to go fishing for the day. And so they went down to the lake and had a great day fishing and obviously didn't catch anything because HR directors never catch any fish. And they were walking back through their truck, and they come along a frog on a rock. And they're walking past it, and all of a sudden, the frog talks and says, if one of you picks me up and kisses me, I'll turn into a beautiful young princess, and I'll grant your every worldly desires. And so they both look at each other, and one HR director reaches down, grabs the frog, and he throws it into his backpack. And the other HR director said, what the heck did you do that for? And he said, at my age, I'd rather have a talking frog. Okay.
Okay, well, move on.
Don't hold me, don't hold that against me on my request here. So they, we have had several inquiries throughout the year to expand our leave donation policy a little bit. And right now, as you see in your information sheet, the, to qualify for leave donation, you have to have a serious medical emergency or condition that causes a severe impact to them, resulting in the need for additional time off in excess of their available sick and vacation time. So basically, we don't get a lot of sick leave donation requests because a lot of people don't meet the criteria. The criteria is that you have to be out for 20 days unpaid, and you have had to use all of your vacation, all of your sick, and all of your comp time, if you have that. And then you would apply for leave donation, and then HR would put out a countywide information sheet that so-and-so is requesting leave donations because they're unpaid at that point. So with the, with the, the determination of it has to be the employee, and it has to be a serious medical emergency or condition, several of the employees over the years have asked, well, can we have maternity leave included in that? And this is really the first time that it has come up to the board. It did go to the PIC last week, and the PIC, I don't think we had a seriously recommendation, one way or the other, but we wanted the full board to weigh in on it. And so the request would be to add maternity and paternity leave as part of the sick leave donation request policy. The impact to the county would be, I think, very minimal. We had 16 requests for maternity leave last year, so we don't, we didn't have a lot. And I think it would be more on the fact of if people don't have a lot of sick leave and vacation, they are on maternity leave and they run out. For instance, we give nine, for new employees, we give 96 hours of vacation and 96 hours of sick leave each year. They would have to work here two and a half years and never take a vacation or sick leave. And that would only equal 192 hours of their 480 hours. So they would have to work here two and a half years to get their 12 weeks of vacation, or 12 weeks of maternity leave paid for. The sidebar on this is this might be a temporary problem because, as you know, the Minnesota legislation passed the Paid Family Medical Leave Act last year. And that will go into effect in 2026. And that will basically pay employees while they're out as part of this whole paid family medical leave run through the state. So I guess my, my request here is the board's wishes on whether they want to add maternity and paternity leave to the leave donation policy.
We discussed this, oh, excuse me, we discussed this at the PIC meeting, and I feel there'd be very few requests coming in the next two years that are going to fall under this, but I would, I don't know, there can be more discussion in that, but I'd make a motion that we add maternity leave to it.
I'll make the second to have a discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
So me and FMLA may take care of the situation. Do we readjust the donation policy in general when that time comes?
Well, the FMLA, the 12 months for the FMLA, just is basically job protection. It doesn't guarantee you wages at this point. When, in 2026, when this goes into effect, then they will be paid as...
In '26, then do we revisit the donation policy?
I think we certainly could. But what it is nice is that we've even had employees wanting to donate to somebody that was out of leave, that is on maternity or paternity leave, or a serious health condition of themselves. And the criteria is they can only donate eight hours of sick leave and then up to 40, or up to 80 hours of vacation. And they can do that once a year. And then the person who's donating can only have up to, they can't have less than 40 hours of sick and vacation combined. So there are some stipulations on who can donate and...
Obviously, it's an act of generosity to a fellow employee.
Right. Yeah, it's kind of an act of generosity for your fellow coworker that you may know that is struggling because they've gone unpaid because they didn't have enough sick leave and vacation to carry them through the 12 weeks.
And I think you were asked already, anything very, you thought, cost-wise, but otherwise, you see any? Or I would ask, Steve, anything negative about doing this?
I think cost-wise, it would be very hard to determine because if, let's say, somebody that's making $40 an hour wants to donate vacation and sick to somebody that's making $20 an hour, that goes into the recipient at their wage, not the $40 an hour wage. So, but likewise, if somebody that's making $20 an hour wants to donate to somebody that's making $40 an hour, then we're paying out at the $40 rather than the $20. So that's very hard to determine. But it's more on a employee versus employee rather than county. There's some stipulations to that, of course.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, just in the PIC meeting, we discussed, the impact, I think, will be minimal. And one of the governors on this is, will somebody donate? I mean, if somebody has got a life-threatening disease or something severely debilitating, that elicits a lot of sympathy from people. If there's a complication in pregnancy, I don't, that would probably apply even now without this vote, if it was...
Right, right, because that would then fall into the first definition of a serious health...
Mm-hmm. But, you know, the employees this would benefit are generally our younger employees of childbearing years.
Correct.
And some of those positions are the hardest to fill. So if they get support from their coworkers, that's probably a good sign.
And they're probably the ones that are more financially, you know, not able to take on being unpaid for several weeks.
Any other discussion or any motions?
We did.
Oh, we already have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Thanks, Darren.
And I'll come with a better joke next time.
All right. We have our county, our current county administrator, Steve Larson, with request approval of Resolution 2024-9 establishing of the West Central Regional Water District and commencement of water systems, system establishment proceedings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you may recall, back in April of 2023, this board first addressed the establishment of the water district and the commitments of the water system established. In the meantime, if you recall, at the beginning of our discussions, we had looked at, in partnering with parts of Polk, Norman County, we had looked at the northern part of Clay County that included parts of 15 townships and also the cities of Georgetown and Felton. As this board found out more information about the establishment of the water district and going through the judicial process, it asked AE2S to conduct a survey on the needs of our entire county in looking at expanding that footprint. And in August of '23, after hearing the findings of that study, the board voted to extend the footprint to include all of Clay County. And so the resolution before you this morning is doing a couple of things. It's updating the previous resolution, and it's amending the boundary districts. It's also authorizing the filing of the legal proceedings within your packet. You see the proposed draft from Hood and Flattery, who is handling, or Flattery and Hood, excuse me, who's handling, has handled to this point, the legal process. And then also, you would be agreeing that Flattery and Hood will serve as our legal counsel moving forward. And you do, I did, I'll provide some additional handouts. Again, you can, the first document is, is we have met with Morehead Public Service and representatives from the city of Morehead. I know it was very important for this board to make sure that we had clear transparency and the expectations of what we're hoping to accomplish and not to have any conflict. And so we had multiple meetings with Morehead Public Service. Most recently, we met with Morehead Public Service representatives from the city of Morehead and also their legal counsel. And the first document here within your packet is the statutory two-mile boundaries around the city. The city of Dilworth has also participated, or utilizes water from Morehead, and so they were included within the two-mile, two-mile limit. The second item within that, then, because of that, there was an adjustment to, not only did Clay County look at increasing their footprint, but also Polk County. And so there were some adjustments in the total population. And if you recall, the cost of, the cost of the project led to, was based on the number of the population for those that could be impacted by the project minus the Morehead Public Service area. And so just a note for our board is, if you recall back in April, when you approved this, we were looking at about a 37%, excuse me, 39% of the total population. With the increase, with the increase in Polk County and the adjustment within Clay County, we'll now have, we'll now have 37% of the total population. This board has, had approved previously, spending roughly a maximum of $117,000 in the establishment of the boundaries through the judicial process. In the event that that would be a $300,000 cost, in this situation with the lower percentage, we would be looking at about a $6,000 savings or about $111,000. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Any questions? Paul?
Just back to Morehead Public Service, if I may. So just so I'm not misunderstanding, as you've talked to them, are they that yellow line then? Or how would that work for their future?
Yeah, so they're very concerned, I think, about making sure that they had their, that two-mile buffer zone completed. And the actual buffer zone which they're providing is the blue, the blue area.
Not to make this too complicated, what happens if it takes years to bring all this down south and Morehead's growing out during that period of time? Annexation parts, you know, continue. How will that work?
I think we've had some, we've had some ongoing discussions in anticipation of that. I think, you know, you've seen that across the river in Fargo. You know, parts of Fargo have a rural water district. And so I think what we've done to this point is have a commitment with, as we move through this process, to commit with the Morehead Public Service to establish what those roles would be.
I think in the event that that were to happen, if the rural water system was not made available and the growth occurred, then the, that Morehead's area would expand, you know, because they would be providing the service. I think that's probably more important than the other way around from the standpoint, and that's what would have been more the public service concern, is that they get, we infringe on that territory, and then they later on have to buy out a utility, which is expensive for them. So I, you know, at that point in time, I think they're, and the one thing, and one of the questions that I had, based on Paul, what you're talking about, is like the, when we have with our dispatch, Steve, we have a, we have a mechanism to review the percentages in population. Wherein here is that mechanism? You know, so, so in other words, if we're 30%, 37% now, is that just go on forever? Or what is the process for review of that? I, that's...
I think it's, my understanding is, through our discussions, is it's the snapshot in establishing, establishing of the cost for the footprint portion of it. From a construction standpoint, I don't believe that...
That'll happen after the legislative process is done, or the judicial process is done, not legislative.
It would probably be contained in a joint powers agreement or MOU, something along that line?
I would assume so. Once we, I think one of the things that we talked about this week is, yeah, what that looks like, and also establishing what the... week is, yeah, what that looks like, and also establishing what the, what this staffing plan will look like once, once we move away from a, from a commission-based board and go to the actual board. I would note, Norman County has already approved this, just because of the timing of, of how, of board meetings. Polk County does have this on their agenda for March 5th.
Okay. Any other questions? We have several motions here that are recommended. Do I have any motion on this?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-09.
They're on second.
Have motion in second. Any discussion on motion to approve the resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion to approve the resolution is, has passed. We also have amended district boundaries, authorization, filing the legal pleading in Clay County District Court, and formal, or formally authorized Flattery and Hood, BA, to serve as legal counsel. Do we have any motions on those?
That is a second, a separate motion?
I think they would be, would they be separate motions?
Yeah, the, the, huh? We could, the, the amendment addresses, the address both the commencement of the waters, the water district and, and the establishment of the water district. And so, I think maybe what we would be cleanest if we just took two and three by themselves. Because I amend, the amended district boundary is covered within the resolution. I think two and three would be something, would be something separate, moving, moving forward, moving forward the draft agreement into the courts.
So, Mr. Chair, would you like the motion to be toward number two first?
I think we can merge both of them into one motion.
Okay, very good. So, I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize filing for Clay County District Court and formalizing authorized Flattery, Hood to serve as legal counsel in the process.
Second. We have motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Both motions pass. Thank you. On the committee reports. Commissioner Mojo, could you start us off?
Yes, thank you. Last week, I attended the Clay County Planning Commission meeting. I, several discussions in regards to a EAW that was completed on a gravel pit that was a recommendation as a follow-up. A good presentation there that did pass. And then, I think there was one other presentation in my, it's downloading, so I'm going to come back to it if it opens. But then left that evening after that meeting to attend the AMC conference with all of you. It was a late, late evening that night, but the next day did have fantastic visits at the Hill with Representative Joy, Representative Keeler, Senator Mark Johnson, and Senator Kupac. As we've talked at length, Clay County has several priorities, public bill priorities, as well as the AMC platform policy priorities. Really great visits with all of them. I felt they were all very generous with their time. It didn't work out to me. It was Representative Keeler, but I'd, we've really been in constant contact with Representative Keeler on our PRTF bill. Happy to report, both of those bills, the CASA 26 and the PRTF bills now have House and Senate file numbers, which we alluded to earlier. Huge representation from the elected officials that serve there. Now, the real work starts as we continue to advocate. I believe eighteen counties have voiced their support for this and was able to have lots of conversations with different commissioners from those boards. And I don't recall a time where we had eighteen counties reach out in a specific project like this, support. Clearly, points to the immense need state and nationwide, really, for that. So, I appreciate that. But we will continue as we propose the funding for the flood mitigation efforts on the Minnesota side, the, the components that need to be completed, not only within the city of Moorhead, but Clay County and the Buffalo Red Watershed, to inch towards completion of that project so that our citizens no longer have to pay flood insurance, but really to make whole the folks that we're displacing for that project. That day, we also had good representation at the, the, I'm not sure what we call it, the State Agency Forum. We did have a good, we were able to meet with Commissioner Paul Marquardt early because we had to leave his presentation, but certainly appreciate his representation of this area in the halls of the Capitol. And then caught the end of the Minnesota DNR update with Commissioner, Assistant Commissioner Bob Meyer. Was able to have a sidebar with him about our projects that we're pushing forward. Appreciate his, his help on that as well. And then, we did have the legislative reception at the hotel. I was able to attend the Northern Counties Land Use Coordinating Board meeting. One, it was great to network with the senators and representatives that were there, but certainly, since I served on the AMC Tax For Fisher Work Group, we had a presentation by our group to that committee. And really is helpful to hear all of the coordination between all of the counties that are affected by, by that ruling, including ourselves. A stronger voice certainly is helpful as we move forward. The next day, I had the AMC MOE Extension Committee meeting. So, we discussed the MOA renewal as we, I've updated this board on several times. Really good, in-depth level discussion on what that MOA will look like. The board did recommend approval and forwarding to the, the counties for discussion and negotiation. Certainly, there's some enormous changes there. We are sensitive to what those changes will be. A reminder to this board that, that MOA represents a contracted employee status, if you will, and the increases that we will likely entertain will include not only wages, but travel that was not included before, and fringe and health insurance. As you all know, we've seen some increases there. But overall, throughout the state, AMC or Extension has had difficulty filling positions because they are twelve month employees with the same education requirements as teachers. And it's just a really hard competition to have when teachers are working nine months. So, that will be coming forward. They did have a chair election, and I was elected chair going forward for the next year as well. That, later that day, we had the Public Policy Committee meetings. I was not able to attend my Public Policy Committee meeting because I was presenting with a panel on the public safety use of funds. I'm certainly glad, glad to see our chair back, back here and did a, a half job representing that committee as he would have done far, far better. But overall, we had really good discussion on how each county utilized those funds. It was really, there were some really common threads in how counties address the funds. There was some verbal concern in how counties were not able to use the funds in regards to tactical equipment, since we are all painfully aware of what happened in Burnsville last week. A lot of counties could have utilized funds to prepare for episodes like that, but I know you will have those discussions going forward. But really, Clay County, one, there was a large applause in regards to how we utilize that for the restorative justice position. A lot of counties were shaking their heads in approval. Some counties used it for ongoing counseling sessions for staff. And I think those are all really creative ways to utilize that. So, more to come with that dialogue. And then, generally, I, I think AMC has done, doubled down on how effective this legislative conference has been over the past few years. It wasn't maybe five years ago where I left thinking, I was wondering if it was worth Clay County's time to continue to send all of us down there. But based on the bills that we have, or authors for that have been jacketed and dropped, and based on the feedback that we have from other counties in regards to our presence statewide, at least twenty-five million dollars in bills have been dropped on Clay County's behalf. And I certainly feel that it continues to be an effective use of our time. So, I appreciate the opportunity to attend that. Yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Annual, Lakeland Mental Health Center Annual Board Meeting. Really good to see Commissioner Kravenoff and our, and Rhonda Porter in attendance. So, thank you for chipping away some time out of your schedule to attend that. Fiscal report for the, the facility, they continue to be, and even though they're unaudited, year-end financials continue to be in good financial standing. We saw a margin of about four point four percent increase for their, income for the year, which is certainly on, on target with where we're at. That's about half of what their revenue was the prior year, and that really can be nailed down to openings in the staffing pattern and workforce shortages. And, and while we're getting good, as you can see with the positive net income, really getting good at dealing with that, that will be, when you're dealing with doctorate level billable hours, that can swing really fast. So, I appreciate the fact that they're on top of that. And then, they did update all of the great work that they're doing in the Moorhead site and in our jail facility between, this was an interesting statistic, in 2023, there were fourteen thousand hours in children's day treatment appointments. Certainly, no, no surprise to us, but I thought it was a shocker, shocking, sobering statistic, but also appreciative of the opportunity for that to be available in Clay County. And then, after that meeting, we did have the executive board meeting, just general business there. That concludes, I believe, my report.
Thank you. And thank you. Last week, I was recovering from knee surgery, and I hated missing the AMC legislative session. It's very important on the public safety end, and you covered for me. I am grateful. I want to thank Commissioner Campbell, and I want to thank the staff. We got many kudos for our use of those public safety funds. And the input we had from, from our department directors, from the sheriff, from our county attorney, gave us a wonderful opportunity to put the money to things that are useful and necessary. And once again, a lot of people in, in this state look at Clay County and go, you're doing some things well. And I appreciate Commissioner Mojo, who probably did a better job than I would at, at presenting it to, to my committee. And Commissioner Campbell, who worked with me on, on our committee to allocate the funds that were there. Also, public safety, or getting the 911 funding to get our, our 911 system set up was also, I think, a very creative use of funds to get, get a public safety issue addressed. But I'm, I'm taking Commissioner Campbell's time.
No, you're not. I'm going to still take my time. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 20th, 21st, and 22nd, of course, we all, we left, we had our board meeting. We all left for St. Paul. And obviously, we were there for the purpose of legislative conference and to go and advocate for things that are of significant importance to not only our county, but potentially our region. There were three main topics of priorities that we brought forward. They were the PRTF issue regarding the psychiatric residential treatment facility, the 911 emergency response funds, and then, and then also the diversion authority, the funds needed, remaining funds needed to finish the financial obligations on behalf of Clay County. And with that, Mr. Chair and Administrator Larson, I would like to formally ask that these three documents that we presented at the, at the legislature be put into the record. I'm primarily concerned with the one regarding the diversion funds. I think in, in meeting our obligations of the JPA, this, this continues to show our efforts in, in asking and, and requesting those funds. So, I, I would, I would ask that these be entered into the records as, you know, part of the official minutes of the meeting, if that would be appropriate.
That wouldn't require a motion, would it? No, enter it in.
Thank you. Then after, you know, so I, and I think Commissioner Mojo talked to you, the rest of you also will probably say a few things about that. But it's the opportu, and, and by the way, there was also a little bit of talk in other counties shared regarding the demolition landfill issues that are going on, some legislations going on that could also have an impact on the demolition landfill that we have here in Clay County. So, it's something that we also better be monitoring moving forward as to what, what potentially could happen with that. It could have an impact on the sustainability of, of those facilities. Then on the 23rd, we got back and we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting. Justin informed us that the federal government right now is, and is working in, regarding the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title VI. And I, so there's some language changes or something that might need to be looked at. I think he's working with Darren, and that'll be brought before pick on those issues. They're related to certain employment issues regarding highway personnel. Then we had the, obviously, the letting schedule, was we did today. We approved the bid on CASA 1. We're looking at the 26 Mill and Overly Project on the March 5th, CASA 14 Bridge Replacement on the 12th, and the RFPs for Glendon Township on the 19th. And then, there's the Box Culverts on the 26th. We continue to talk about the draft MOU between Clay County and the Diversion Authority for future operation, operations and maintenance on, on issues related to that project. We had quite a bit of discussion regarding dust control, the different options out there. There's, apparently, over the last couple of years, there's been issues related to the availability of the product, which has caused some problems between what is put down for county purposes versus private landowners. So, I think what we decided on there to start with now would be to just have Justin be able to, through a letter, kind of explain the importance if they sign up for that, and then that it's all subject to availability of the product. So, I was glad that he brought that to our attention. And then, the, of course, the grant application for 26 was talked about. So, hopefully, that'll, if that, if that happens, that could free up some other five-year plan issues that are, that we could use. We were awarded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the CASA 1252 intersection. That's a, that's a big deal. That's the realignment in that area where, if you recall, it's kind of, IV 52 kind of goes in an angle, not a safe intersection. And then, Transportation Day at the Capitol is on March 13th, and that was on the same day of the proposed 11th Street Underpass pre-construction meeting. So, I think what they're planning on is Justin will go to St. Paul, and his, his new assistant will attend the pre-con meeting, if that does indeed happen. Right now, it's just a proposed date. And then, yesterday, we did have our, on the 26th, we did have our West Central Water Resource, or Water District and regional coordination. We talked about what their regional, they're working with Marshall Polk on issues related to geographic areas, just like we just talked about with Moorhead Public Service. And, you know, there's the SWCDs, Minnesota DNR and Bowser are all, all involved with this now to, and then, there was some discussion regarding that private well protection grants that was submitted. And if you recall, we had Matt and, and Kevin from the SWCD were here, were talking about that grant application and how we all went together on that application. And then, we had some more. And then we had some more talk about the Minnesota Legislative Session update. And then lastly, we have the billing issue. Steve, I know we've, Clay County has been, is the financial, on this $300,000 piece. And I, as the bills come in now, there needs to be some coordination on Norman, I think the bills are up to around $80,000, some thousand dollars now. And Norman County had prepaid. So some of those, you know, I think it's going to be up to Polk and Clay County to pay up until Norman, we're caught up to Norman County. And afterwards, I was talking with Steve from Norman County, and he suggested that maybe Lori touch base with Donna, who's the auditor treasurer for Norman County. So Lori is up to speed on what Norman County's already paid. So, you know, so if they've already paid $40,000, some thousand dollars, then, you know, we have, we have to meet our 37%, but we might have to pay more just to get caught up. So, you following what I'm saying there? Okay. And that concludes my report.
Commissioner Campbell, did you update on the AMC, or the land management meeting of the diversion that you attended?
Oh, yeah. So I did, you know, I attended the land management meeting virtually. That's while I was in St. Paul. And there was basically several small tracts of land that were subject to the, where they weren't needed anymore, the excess lands. And so there was recommendations on what to do with each of those parcels. And it followed, it basically followed the, and that, by the way, I should report that I had a diversion meeting too then. And I guess I forgot to include that as well. And so those were all recommended through lands to follow the lands policy, or the excess lands policy. And then in the diversion meeting, we did have, thank you for reminding me that, we did have a diversion meeting. And...
This excites?
Yeah. And all, and so they were formally approved there. And then I think that was, other than the typical updates, I think that was the majority of what took place at that meeting, other than that we did have an executive session to just discuss, you know, where the project's at and items related to the contract on the project. So, thank you. That concludes my report.
Mr. Gross.
Last Tuesday, at the Personnel Issues Committee, and we covered all four of the five points here at today's meeting, other than the Strive for Excellence training opportunities that they're trying to propose to do, some leadership training, probably flew it up to eight to 10 people next year, or this year, yet to do some additional training to move up in their jobs or whatever. So give some leadership training. So they're going to plan on doing that. I think that's part of your management team, I think. That night, Tuesday night, I attended the MRC meeting. They already discussed mostly the tax forfeiture, which we discussed quite a bit, how to handle that, or where the excess funds go to. We had two senators talk to us, gave us some information of what's going on, but wasn't much information that they provided, other than what their schedule is and what committees they're on. I think we had, as it was discussed before, the meetings that we hit with our senators and representatives, I really was impressed with, I think they're moving fast on it. I mean, we already heard already, you know, they've got some House bills and Senate bills on the things that we discussed. And I think they were good meetings, and glad we did that. Friday, we had Highway Tracking, which Commissioner Campbell's ready to discuss on it. The only thing I think not important, not really important, but they were gifted a drone. So they have a drone now with the Highway Track. And I think, I think the fire department, the mortgage is doing the operation of that, though we get someone trained. So, but they were, they got their own drone now, which is good. And then the Water District meeting, which we had yesterday. Again, Dan Marx is just talking at the, from Flagrady and Hood, just telling us how much they've spent so far, $84,000, which I think you've covered. So their rates are increasing from 210 per hour to 220 per hour. So, these lawyers are expensive. And other than that, I think Kevin pretty well covered what we did there. That's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kravenoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me, I wanted to leave too, because I've got a doctor appointment, so.
I too enjoy everyone at the, at our legislative days in St. Paul. Again, not to repeat much, but I was impressed with our legislative visits. I feel like it's really helpful that we have personal relationships with these legislators. And I think they're so comfortable as we come into the room, and we're comfortable in talking with them, that I think our points or what we're trying to advocate for are taken heart by them and properly advanced with their support. So that's a good setting to be in, and that's from years of work by this organization long-term. Specific to my area of Health and Human Services, we had our meeting, and we had presentations by two commissioners, one, Brooke Cunningham, the Department of Health, MDA, and Jody Harpstead, who was the head, I think for the last year, of Human Services. They kind of gave a high level view of what was going on in their departments. I wanted to speak to one, the Department of Health, they were given in the last legislative session, $200,000, or $200 million, I'm sorry, to invest toward the updating of their systems and IT, and building, you know, a good foundation for other counties to work in. One of the things that we're doing, part of AMC, is to create language to modernize not only DHS, but what about that shared responsibility that should be with the counties, so bringing that voice forward. There's going to be some upcoming legislation, a bill being advanced by Senator Kupick, that will help address that balance. So we'll see where that leads to throughout the session. Other than that, I finished up that, with a luncheon that last day, and I'm glad I stuck around. Number one, it was really a good meal, short ribs. And, but that being said, the presentations during that time were fun. So we had the presentations of AMC 4H Awards, fantastic things that those young kids do, not only for food distribution, food shelves, that was a big one, but just the advancement of projects being done in community through the 4H programs. And it's always a highlight to see. And these are mainly, mainly the kids being recognized, that probably are in the high school age. So it's at a lot, a higher level where things get leveraged a little more. And then a very good, a very good state of the counties addressed by our current president, Neil Gulzwick, I think is how you say it. Anyway, he did a great job. As Commissioner Mojo mentioned, I was online to listen to Lakeland's annual meeting yesterday. One thing I take away that I thought was interesting, and I hadn't thought about or known, but with the new facility being built in Moorhead with Lakeland, that new building, how that was all done by cash. And so, like, it was shown in that balance sheet, it just, that, you know, it moved that, their cash position into assets, but $5 million that they were able to have a cash contribution to that. And then also yesterday, I had my Clay County Food Partners Steering Committee. And as we plan for the Cassafeli Food Commission, which is Wednesday, March 13th, at Fargo City Commission, 10:30 to noon, invite everybody to come, we're going to be talking about mainly, recognize National Nutrition Month, along with USDA permanent summer SNAP programs, understand those better. And then one part of our food partners that we had these first Fridays for years, that went away at the end of last year. And we're looking at an overall piece of how the food partners interact with each other. And we're looking at strategic planning. So we've, through grants that we've attained, we're going to hire Dr. Jeffrey Schatz, a consultant in the Fargo area, that's where City of Moorhead and NDSU, many other entities in our local area, to work on a strategic plan. And that development, that plan will probably take over sometime over the place over the next six months. So that's the main part of my meetings, and that's what I have today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm so sorry I did neglect one meeting. It was the Friday we came back. It was the Emergency Executive Committee meeting of the MetroCog Board. As you recall, there's some issues with NDDOT and some funding, particularly with Minnesota side projects. And so we met to collaborate on how we will send a letter to Governor Burgum and then copy the governor's office in Minnesota based on that. So that was my meeting.
Okay, thank you. As stated before, I was out, but I was able to attend all of my meetings remotely last week. I want to thank Commissioner Campbell for chairing. I was able, under the new state guidelines, to participate in a meeting, but I wasn't going to try and chair it from remote. So I gave a report last week on issues of that week. On the, later that day, I attended the PIC meeting remotely, which has been covered by Commissioner Gross. On the 21st, on Wednesday, I attended the Diversion Authority Finance We had the usual reports, and we also discussed the city Fargo projects. It's a lift station they put in. It has come in 1.2 million over the original, the bid was 1.2 million over the funds extended. And that'll be coming out of the sales tax cash reserves, the sales tax over there is coming in quicker. And it was our recommendation, which was approved the following day with the main board, that those funds be advanced for this purpose. And we had a pretty good discussion about, as the sales tax comes in ahead of schedule, we don't need to be putting new expenses on the diversion, like bike trails and parks, until we know that those funds aren't going to be necessary for the inflated estimates we're, or bids we're getting in on other projects. So that was a good discussion. Following day, I attended the Diversion Authority remotely, and Commissioner Campbell covered that well. And that completes my report. Steve, do you have anything for us?
I think, Mr. Chair, last Tuesday, I pretended, participated in the PIC meeting that's been addressed on the 20th, participated in the MACA meeting down in St. Paul. We heard updates from Matt Hilgert and Jill Sermeyer from AMC. Participated in the AMC Legislative Conference. Again, would just like to thank the board for their commitment this year in identifying Clay County's, Clay County's priorities in addition to what AMC provides. I think that I always enjoy going down to St. Paul, but I, but I think the work that you guys did this week was, was really a benefit to the citizens of Clay County. Also, would just note, during the time down there, we were able to, we were able to get Gabe Tweaton, Lieutenant Gabe Tweaton, our emergency manager, on the AMC Emergency Medical Service Committee. They're going to be, there's eight to 10 different members throughout the state of Minnesota that are going to be looking at identifying different avenues to, to put into the legislative process on the behalf of the counties to help deal with that challenge that many of our counties are facing. On Friday, or Thursday morning, I met with Ryan Weber, Troy Amundson, B3 representatives in regards to the variants related to, related to our detox facility. If you recall, this board put in a number of variances back in January of last year. We had received approval on varying, all the variances except for the light requirements within the day rooms. After ongoing discussion and further explanation of operations at the end of the meeting, we did get a verbal, a verbal approval of that variance. Klein-McCarthy and staff have since uploaded the additional information. And so we're hoping to receive final variance approval here within the last two weeks. Participated that afternoon in the Highway Tracking, which has been covered. On Friday, I met with Sherri Larson, Executive Director of Moorhead Business Association, and talked to her, shared with her about our Withdrawal Management Detox Project. She would like to extend invitation as we get closer to opening to their business group to provide an insight. And we did offer opportunity to tour that facility once it gets closer to completion. We also did touch base on the DMV project that's going on also. On 23rd, we participated in a West Central Regional Water District pre-meeting prior to the meeting that was held yesterday, which has been well-covered. Just a couple of different notes, and next week we'll be bringing forward, I did share with each of you guys individually this last week about a proclamation request from the city of Fargo in regards to the Governmental Communications Day. We'll be bringing that forward next week for your consideration. And also, just a reminder to our citizens, we continue to have an opening, or will have an opening, for the Wild Rice Water District Manager, the watershed. We're taking applications until March 6th. Let that conclude my report.
Thank you. Anything, Brian? Sarah? All right, then we're adjourned.